Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Don, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Personelli?
Present.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilwoman Rossini?
Present.
Mayor Protem Colacott?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. Tonight, I would like to start a tradition of having a Villa Park distinguished citizen leading us in the pledge. I believe that the city has a number of distinguished citizens, and I'd like to highlight these to the city. Tonight, we have Corporal Fred Whitaker, Sr., a WWII veteran, proudly served our nation in combat infantry from 1943 to 1946. He participated in several campaigns including SAR, Rhineland, Central Europe, and the historic Battle of the Bulge. He's recipient of five honor medals, four service medals, and four, five foreign decorations, including the French Legion of Honor, France's highest honor. He graduated from Stanford University with honors. He represented Stanford University in base with Oxford and Cambridge Universities. In a career of over fifty years, he served his life in health insurance industry in legislative committees, traveling to Sacramento and Washington as needed. Currently, he's an officer of the Freedom Committee of Orange County, the 501(c)(3) nonprofit of veterans of five wars, WWII through Iraq and Afghanistan. They share their war stories to over a hundred thousand students. The theme is "Freedom is Not Free." He's married to Arlene Sprich and is a forty-eight-year resident of Villa Park. Today, I would ask WWII veteran Fred Whitaker, Sr., to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would join me as we pledge our allegiance to our flag in our country, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. I'm supposed to present you with Villa Park Distinguished Citizen lapel pin, but unfortunately, Kim said we don't have them just yet. So as soon as we get them, I'll get one out to you, okay? At this time, I'd last ask all of those in the audience to please silence your cellphones or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council...
Vince is giving Mr. Whitaker his City of Villa Park pin.
Okay, all right. Vince gave him his current City of Villa Park pin, but we have a special one that says distinguished citizen as well. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. First, we have presentations, and we have someone here from the Association of California Cities of Orange County? Mr. Murray?
Good evening, Mayor Nelson and distinguished council members. My name's Al Murray. I'm a mayor pro tem in the city of Tustin, but my, one of my other responsibilities is president of the Association of California Cities of Orange County. And this evening gives me great pleasure to introduce our CEO, Heather Stratman. She's going to do a presentation, give you a little overview of some of the things that Association of California Cities brings to the cities in our membership. One of the things I also wanted to say, and she's very humble and doesn't like kudos, but she has been with us for about a year now, and Association of California Cities has always done a good job, but she's helped us take it to another level. So she's doing a great job, and I think you'll really enjoy the presentation. So without further ado, I'll introduce our CEO, Heather Stratman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's nice to be here. Thank you for agending us. We appreciate the time. I'm going to be, I'm going to move as quickly as possible and then reserve any time at the end for questions that you may have. We do have a PowerPoint presentation. I do not. We think it's... It was emailed. It should email the PowerPoint presentation.
Mayor, while we're waiting for the PowerPoint, I have to report out a closed session that we did discuss two items, and there's no reportable action. And with your permission, can I ask Mr. Whitaker a question?
Yes.
So if you were in the Battle of the Bulge, did you know General Patton?
Reputation.
That is by far my all-time favorite movie. Anything in life, I mean, I would have loved to meet General Patton, so honored to meet you, sir. That is all.
Can we bring it up?
Sorry about that, Heather. I thought it was only extra than apparently the other computer tasks, so...
Boy. Now, let me use the fan. Oh, I do now. So, she's following. Oh.
Mayor, would I suggest maybe we go to the sheriff and the fire, and then we'll pull it up for Heather, and we'll find it.
Yeah, we can do that. First off, we'll start with the Orange County Sheriff's Department while they're getting that set up.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Sergeant Troy Feely with the Sheriff's Department. Lieutenant Puckett's at training, so I'm filling in for him tonight. And I have the crime statistics for January of 2017 for Villa Park. We had a total of eight crimes in January in the city of Villa Park, two residential burglaries, three petty thefts, one vandalism, and two stolen vehicles. There were, in addition to that, there were seven traffic accidents, mostly contributed to the rain over the past couple of weeks. There were also thirty-five traffic citations and forty-eight parking citations written during that same timeframe. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the chair?
I have some comments. I had a very nice meeting with Lieutenant Puckett last Thursday. We talked about a variety of issues in the city. Certainly, a lot of it had to do with traffic and traffic patterns, and he enlightened me. He did give me some documents that he presented to the LEAC committee, which were actual documentation of citations and each of the streets that we've had accidents on versus not having accidents on. We do have a lot of people who have a perception that we have accidents at certain intersections, but ultimately, we actually don't. So it was very good, and I think that the council should get a copy of those documents. Don, I don't know if you ever did get a copy of those from the LEAC committee that he presented. There's some good... Okay, I do have it, and the lieutenant gave it to us, and it's something that was really very good, and he has suggested that we put that on the website because it is quite favorable, to be honest with you. It does show you how diligent we are in our crime prevention here, and it does show you where there is a need, if you will, for maybe some speed bumps, maybe some traffic control and things such as that. In addition, the Sheriff's Department is going to participate once again with a positive enforcement. They're going to be making a banner for us of no texting and driving. They did one for us over the holidays of no drinking and driving, and that's going to be coming forwards for the spring that we'll be putting on at the street corners, and he'll be presenting the artwork to our new city manager, you know, when he comes back in about three weeks. So we're looking forward to that. The other items that we talked about also was the SRO and their role as far as the school goes and how important it is, and how much time that the SRO does spend over there for items that we may not want to discuss here, but there's serious offenses that happen at the high school with different types of, different type of crimes and different type of children, adults, and so on, and your services over there are needed for Villa Park residents, Orange residents, and so on, and I thank you for that. We've had, our SRO's been busy.
Yes, he has been very busy.
He has been busy. Times are changing right now.
We're very happy that Deputy Benzie is here in the city of Villa Park to handle that. He's a very astute deputy, so he's taking care of all those issues.
And thank you for your service. You did help, you did help us out with the Little League opening day in traffic control. We appreciate it. Hope you guys enjoyed that.
No problem, anytime.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Does forty-eight parking tickets seem high to you in Villa Park?
No, it just depends on when, when they did it. If they, if they did it during like a street sweeping time or something like that, I don't, I don't know when those forty-eight tickets were spread out.
Okay.
But overall, forty-eight parking tickets is not, not extraordinarily high for any area.
Okay. Just seem kind of high compared to all the other statistics.
I can check on, I'll check on where most of those citations came from.
I appreciate that.
Our CSO, and I'll have Lieutenant Puckett answer that question maybe next city council.
Cool, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Are we ready with the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. Heather? Could you slide over a bit, sir? Sit here.
Okay, thank you.
Turn that...
I think we can go to the next slide. All right. So I want to start off with who are we? We are an organization, we are a nonprofit, membership-based organization, and we provide the cities of Orange County a powerful regional voice on public policy issues of today and tomorrow. We achieve this mission through three primary objectives: education that empowers, we focus heavily on education for our elected officials and city staff; policy that is collaborative, we do this through a number of policy committees that feed into our Board of Directors; and advocacy that is service-oriented. So we look at the challenges and the opportunities that are presented to our cities, and we dig into those and try to create strategic advocacy objectives that meet the needs of our cities. This is a quick glance at our governance structure. We have a Board of Directors of thirteen city council members, and we also have a member of the Board of Supervisors who serves on our Board of Directors. Right under that, we have a Legislative and Regulatory Committee, and then you'll see a series of policy committees that all feed into our Board of Directors. Our Board of Directors has the final say on any policy directives that are produced out of those policy committees. Our membership, our membership is rather diverse. We do represent the cities of Orange County, obviously, but we have the vast majority of the regional government agencies also in our membership base, and so those would be everything from the Orange County Transportation Authority to the Orange County Vector Control, the multitude of water and wastewater agencies that are out there, and that's an important part of our membership base because those are agencies that the cities need to interact with and collaborate with on a number of different policy issues, and we are a group that brings all of those government agencies, local government agencies in the county together. Higher education, we partner extensively with Cal State Fullerton and UCI on a number of initiatives particularly related to those, that educational effort that we provide for our membership. The business community, the business community is a partner of ours. They often bring solutions and creative problem-solving to the table. And the nonprofit organizations, I'm always impressed by their willingness to come to the table to help with problem-solving, and we, we appreciate them, and they're a large group of them. A quick recap of 2016, and I think this is important for me to acknowledge because I am the new CEO for just a year now, and the organization has just hit its sixth-year anniversary. And so I think this last year has been a pretty significant right turn for the organization. And just very quickly, we did an immense amount of internal reorganization to really shift the staff back to focusing on the needs of the membership, and I think that we've done a very good job there. The Board of Directors took us back to the fundamentals of what the organization was founded on, which is to represent Orange County and the values of Orange County and the cities of Orange County. We are, we strive for very high customer service in terms of getting back to our membership and addressing the needs of our membership, and I believe deeply in the, in the ability of this organization to be membership-led. So it is not myself or the Board of Directors who are dictating what we are doing, but rather, the membership comes to the table to say, these are the emerging issues that we need help with, and this is what, this is what we want to focus on, and I think that's very powerful. Governance reorganization, we took a look at some of our governance, and we reorganized slightly. We restructured our legislative committee to make it more centric to cities, and also we restructured our committees slightly to hold them more accountable to our Board of Directors. And then we have really created this idea of inclusivity. We want to be a group where all are welcome, and oftentimes, there could be this sort of confusion that, you know, only one of your council members can participate in our organization, and absolutely not. I'm very much more, the more the merrier. Brown Act issues excluded. I look at your city attorney. And then we, we have focused heavily on advocacy at the state, the regional, state, and federal levels, and I will just touch on that briefly as I go forward. And then lastly here, our educational efforts have been very, very targeted at elected officials and city staff. There are always emerging issues that you folks are presented with from a policy standpoint, and our role is never to tell you which way you should go, but rather to give you neutral information and provide you with the best possible information so that you can make decisions for your city. We also, and this was a direct charge from our Board of Directors, we, we were, we were charged with this idea that if our policy committees were going to meet, they had to produce tangible tools and programs that support the city's needs. Our policy committees are not there just to meet. We are very small staff. We don't have the ability and the resources just to meet to meet, so tangible, tangible information and tools have to come out of those policy committees, and that can be everything from model ordinances to white papers to best practices. And then we have, and I feel personally, this is, this is a huge part of my role, this extensive effort across the county to collaborate, and that's from everything to pulling the cities together, to work together, and to think regionally on issues, to bringing in the county when necessary, and many of those other government agencies, nonprofit, and the business community as appropriate. Okay, regional advocacy here. Our jo, our job is really to protect the cities on a variety of different issues, and these are just a few of examples. We've been working collaboratively both with cities and special districts across the county to fight back on the county related to flood control right-of-way fees. The AQMD in their AQMP, which is the Air Quality Management Plan, which dictates their work, we identified very early on in 2016 that they were trying to take a secondary role at having oversight over your MS4 permits, permits. Your regional, your regional quality control boards already do that, so we pushed back really hard on AQMD with the assistance of Councilmember Dwight Robinson, your representative out of Lake Forest, and were able to eliminate that provision. And then we are partnering extensively with the County of Orange on a collaborative effort on homelessness issues. State advocacy, President Murray mentioned earlier that while, you know, the League of Cities kind of takes a statewide role, we take a more local role, but we also take a very proactive approach in Sacramento, and my perspective on that is while, you know, perhaps we're not always going to agree with what Sacramento does, we still need to be a very strong voice at the table to ensure that our interests are representative and that we are fighting against mandates that are often pushed down by the state to the cities. In addition to that, I mentioned we're taking a proactive stance on advocacy issues. We are sponsoring two pieces of legislation, the first being sober living home oversight. We, I didn't have the bill number at the time this presentation was created, but it's AB 346 authored by Assemblymember Sharon Quirk Silva, and what this will do will allow cities to have a, an inspector who actually is housed here in Orange County. It's a pilot program to oversee sober living homes. What we have found is that when a city calls the Department of Health Services in Sacramento, it can take a year for them to come down and inspect. That is unacceptable, particularly in a county that bears forty percent of the sober living problem across the state. In addition to that, we are sponsoring a piece of legislation authored by Assemblymember Daley and co-sponsored by Assemblymember Bill Bro, AB 346, which would allow cities to utilize their low and moderate affordable housing funds for projects like permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. In addition to that, it, the bill would allow contiguous cities to pool their funds. We think this is a major step in allowing cities to proactively address some of the challenges of very low affordable housing, homelessness issues, and give cities flexibility in terms of how they use those dollars. We've collected, collected research on how much money is outstanding in those low and moderate housing funds across the county, and it's estimated at $60 million. It's, it's significant money. In addition to that, we are, we are working very proactively to provide input into the governor's housing proposals so that cities do not get the administration's push in terms of what you should be doing on housing, but rather you get to make those determinations. Long-term water conservation mandates, this is the way our lives are going to be going into the future, that we will only have a certain amount of water to use. And then, of course, there is legislation pending on additional transportation and fees and taxes, and we're working closely with OCT on those issues. Federal advocacy, we are supporting and really leading the charge on HR 4722 authored by Congressman Darrell Isa. This would completely give power back to the cities on sober living homes in terms of how you can regulate those locally. We think that's very, very important. FAA regulations on drones, homelessness resources through the, through HUD. With, with the passage of Prop 64, whether we like it or not, we have to deal with recreational cannabis. It's a major issue, particularly when it relates to public safety. And then, of course, infrastructure funding for water and transportation. Educational opportunities, this is just a very quick look, outlook of what we do, but we focus heavily on educational opportunities through forums, workshops, symposiums. We partner with organizations across the county to bring the most relevant and emerging issues to you folks so that you can be well-educated, and I would always welcome any other ideas that you have on some of these educational opportunities. And then lastly here, my staff laughs, laughs at me all the time, but they are a bunch of millennials, and I use this hashtag OC Working Together because I truly believe that ACCOC is the only organization in this county that has the ability to pull together multiple stakeholders and collaborate proactively and efficiently on really, really challenging public policy issues, and we do that through that idea of being inclusive and pulling people together and very much being focused on problem-solving. We, we know what the challenges are, so let's start to come up with solutions that are realistic and effective. So with that, I will stop. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them, and again, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, any questions from the council?
Yeah, you mentioned one factoid. You said that, I want to make sure I got it right, you said forty percent of the state sober living homes are in Orange County?
That's correct.
Holy cow.
Yes, I know. Yeah, we, we...
How many are in Orange County, do you know?
I don't know the exact number. They, they do come and go. They can open and close, you know, every day, so it's hard to say the exact number, but we've done a significant amount of research on this, knowing that particularly our coastal cities bear, just bear the brunt of it. And sober living homes versus facilities, just to clarify, sober living homes are six beds and under. I could open one of those tonight, to be honest. I could go purchase a home and open one. I don't have to be licensed, and I certainly don't have any requirements. Sober living facilities are six beds and over. They are licensed by the state of California, and there are, you know, there are criteria to do so, but we believe that the criteria of opening and closing those homes does not put the, the local control where it needs to be, and that's with the cities in terms of, you know, if you don't want those near your schools, you should be able to say, we don't want these near our schools. And, and right now, you don't have that ability because of ADA law and fair housing law.
So just to make sure I'm got it clear, it's forty percent of sober living homes and facilities in the state are in Orange County?
That's correct. I know.
Any other questions?
No, I'd like to say I have utilized your services and your educational symposiums quite, you know, quite some, but they really do a good job in educating a selected officials. I visited the dump. I've gone to Sacramento a few times. I've got a few water trips with you as well as, as with Metropolitan. So certainly, the information that you have, I think, is underutilized by us, and I greatly appreciate you coming up and actually telling us a little bit more about what you do do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I had one. You're probably here because of a question I asked at the last meeting, and it was when our finance director told us that our dues had doubled. I'm, I'm well aware of the great work that you do, but I was wondering why the dues had doubled. And I looked at your dues from last year and this year, and apparently, this year, you changed the way you do the dues. But when I saw on the schedule was, our dues actually went down from last year with the new schedule. So I didn't really understand why, why, said that was an increase.
I like to, I like to say it's my really good math skills, but that's not true. So, you know, when I, when I came in, you know, I was trying to sort of understand the dues structure so that I could justify that verbally, publicly, and, and what we realized is we didn't have a really strong basis of those dues structure. So the Board of Directors charged me with, okay, you know what the dues are, we know what those numbers are, but back into that with a very justifiable formula. And so after a lot of wrangling with that, I, you know, what ultimately came out was we charge a $5,000 flat fee to each city, and on top of that, based on per resident, we charge less than fourteen cents, and it actually is 1.375 cents per resident, and that is your number, and that is the number we use across the board. And, and I think it is a relatively fair number in, in terms of how we try to calculate it. Obviously, the bigger cities pay an enormous amount more, but it's relative to, to the community size.
But how's that translate into a fifty percent increase from last year?
Okay, so what had happened is I mentioned that the organization hit its six-year mark this year, but when the organization was initially formed, I believe, and I was not there then, so, but the, there was a great, there was a great pressure to ensure that all of the cities in the county became members. Obviously, that was very important as the organization broke away from the League of California Cities, to be quite honest. And in order to do that, I think that there was, there was, there was opportunities to bring cities in at a lower dues structure than, than was what was the actual number that they would have been assigned through a formula.
So we want our old number. We want to be brought back in again.
And Mr. Mayor, I do not blame you. However, I do have, I do have a charge from the Board of Directors to ensure that everyone's paying their own fair share and that it is across the board, the dues structure that, that the membership did adopt.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the Orange County Fire Authority.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'd like to report since our last meeting, Orange County Fire Authority responded on forty-seven responses in the city of Villa Park. Most of those, as usual, were medical aids, EM... Most of those, as usual, were medical aids, EMS-related. We had a couple incidences that were related to the heavy rains. And we did have one structured fire on Charter Road, fairly significant fire, but happy to say no injuries to either civilians or firefighters. And then, the only other thing I wanted to mention is we have, as of last week, got all of our personnel back from Northern California. The Oroville Dam spillway compromise that was up there was threatening 188,000 people. That's a whole bunch of folks. And for the first time ever, they actually activated all of the swift water rescue teams into that vicinity up there. So all of, I believe there's 18 across the state were all mobilized to Northern California in anticipation of the spillway failure. And fortunately for everybody concerned, that did not occur. So all of our folks are back and home safe and ready for a little break in the rain.
All right. Any questions for the Fire Department? None, thank you very much. Next, we have the individual reports, starting first with the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District, and that would be mine. And on the last meeting, we had no action items on agenda except for the usual consent agenda items on the agenda. One of the informational items we got was the budget schedule for the year. And we also had a presentation from Hester Petropopulos, the district's new education coordinator, who gave us a presentation entitled "Small People, Big Ideas: Mosquito Education in Orange County Schools," that she's providing to the schools in Orange County. And this is a new education coordinator we brought on to better educate people in public schools about mosquitoes. And that concludes my report. We have the Orange County Sanitation District, Bob?
Okay, yeah, that'd be me. I attended the, Orange County Sanitation District was pretty busy this past month. I attended the Administrative Committee meeting on February 8th. We reviewed the budget assumptions and the budget calendar for the 2017-2018 budget cycle. And we also reviewed the storm preparations for the district. The district typically experiences greatly increased inflows from their collection system during storm conditions, and they were anticipating that that's, the storm that we had a couple of weeks ago was going to be much more substantial than it was. So they implemented their emergency action plan. I also attended the Orange County Sanitation District Director's orientation on February 15th. This included a tour of the facilities. I've toured the facilities once again, or a couple of times before, most recently a couple of years ago. And even the past two years, there's been a substantial amount of change and upgrade to their facilities. During our tour, the staff also discussed planned maintenance upgrades of the treatment facilities and some of their other operational interests. Finally, I attended the District Board of Directors meeting on February 22nd, and the key item there was the establishment of an interim food waste receiving facility. Now, recent state law requires that, requires diversion of food waste from landfills. And so, like, our collection supplier is separating food waste from the rest of the waste stream. And what they do is they liquefy it, and they will be, or will be liquefying it and trucking it down to the sanitation district. And we approved the development of a food acceptance facility where it'll take the food waste, and they'll be able to put it into their digesters and generate methane gas, which will power generators to actually generate electricity to run the treatment plant. So it's, looks like a win for everybody. So anyway, that concludes my sanitation district report.
Thank you, Bob. Orange County Library Advisory Board?
No meeting.
Budget and Finance Committee, we had no meeting. Community Development and Public Safety?
Yes, we, on February 6th, we, the Community Development and Public Safety Committee met, and we reviewed a proposed variance that's on today's agenda. And at this meeting, I requested staff to notify affected residents of proposed variances in the future prior to the committee meetings. And that way, the residents that might be affected would have an opportunity to provide input to the Community Development and Public Safety Committee before we make recommendations onto the city council.
Bob, can I stop you on that? You said you recommended that, but that was normal course. So did it stop somewhere along the line? Because when I was on there for two years, we never had a meeting without the notices going out.
I was surprised that this one, I asked the question, you know, where are the residents and were they notified? And they said, oh, well, we're going to notify them before the city council meeting. And so our direction was, okay, going forward, you know, the affected public needs to be notified prior to the committee meeting so that they have an opportunity to provide their input, both the committee meeting and as well as the council meeting.
So has that not been done for the last two years, three years? Because I haven't been on it for three years.
I believe they've been notified in the past, but I'm not, you know, I can't say for certain. But certainly, that's the correct procedure, is to let the residents know before a committee hears it. Anyway, as there had been no notification of the affected parties, there were no residents showed up, and only staff and applicants, the applicant were present. So anyway, hopefully going forward, we will have more, we will provide notification, or staff will provide notification to the residents so that they can provide input before the committee hears it. Okay, and that concludes the community development.
Human Resources?
Human Resources, we met, but given the nature of the topics, can't discuss that. But I'm just very proud of our city employees and wanted to say thank you in these challenging times with the rain and the transition of council, and just keep up the good work. Thank you. That concludes my report.
City Schools Advisory?
I had no meeting.
Law Enforcement Advisory?
Bob, you want to go ahead and grab that? Okay. The Law Enforcement Advisory Committee met on February 6th, and we discussed several items, including a storm drain collapse at Mason Henderson, monthly crime stats, citations, and traffic collisions, as Councilmember Facinelli mentioned, burglaries at construction sites, which thankfully have gone down, community emergency response team, neighborhood watch program, professional services responder program, and various ongoing crime prevention and traffic safety recommendations. The next Law Enforcement Advisory Committee meeting will, correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn, it's April, I think it's the first week in April, the first Monday in April. Look forward to seeing everybody there. That concludes my report.
Investment Advisory Committee did not have a meeting, so we'll go to the Villa Park Community Services Foundation, Robbie?
Thank you. A great meeting. It was my first time attending the Community Services Foundation and getting to know everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank Kay Rogers for her leadership in the meeting. I am on a recruiting mission to help the Community Services Foundation find some additional board members and hopefully get an influx of wonderful people to help us with some of the initiatives that we're putting together for the foundation this year and all the different events. Some of you may or may not know, we lost Julia Peterson's leadership in the Halloween event, so we're actively seeking new candidates for the position of leadership for that effort. And would certainly encourage anybody to come forward and help us out with that, because I think it's a very worthwhile event. I've participated in many ways in the past, you know, by bringing ambulances in and, you know, teaching kids about EMS and those types of things. And I just think it's a great event for our children and our families. There are a couple of things that concern me a little bit. I think we've got to enhance our collaboration and our work effort between the council and the board to help bring us closer together. I was surprised to find out that none of us sitting up here are foundation members or sponsors. So I'm going to pass around the collection plate tonight.
Correction, I am a member.
Well, Kay told me, but that's okay.
I have my, I have my cash check.
Good.
I'll show you.
But I've got my check tonight to put in the collection plate, so I'll pass the collection plate to all of us, and encouraging you to become a sponsor. I'm also encouraging the entire council to attend the meetings and be there along with the city manager, because I think, you know, the insight that we can bring to the board is very helpful with some of their initiatives. There may be an opportunity for us to also, through the staff and so forth, and we'll have to talk about that, to offer some support to the board for financial things and so forth. So we've got some work to do to bring us much closer together, enhance the collaboration, and do work, because this is a great cause for our community. It does a lot to enhance what goes on in our community. And, you know, I'd like to see some more youth events. I've got some proposals for next month's meeting, some more youth events and things like that. So it was a great meeting, and thank you for the opportunity. I really enjoyed it and missed you, Vets.
You know what? I really look forward to attending the next one. Fortunately, I had a conflict, but correct me if I'm wrong, hopefully you accept my invitation to meet with the foundation the second week in March. I think that this new council is going to reach out in a really significant and meaningful way and rebuild their ranks and partner with them in a significant manner.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next, Friends of Villa Park Library.
No meeting.
Okay, that concludes the reports. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. I don't see any comment cards, but is there anyone that wants to make a public comment?
Mary Nelson, may I make one announcement, make a public comment? Because since everyone's here, they can hear it. This Saturday, March 4th, Republic Services is offering their annual compost giveaway for the city of Villa Park. If you want to bring your trash can, no bag, bring your bucket trash cans, a couple of them, because you bring a huge truck. Come over to Villa Park High School. It's going to be from 8:00 to 11:00. The stuff's good, and they offer a lot. It's really good. So I just want you to know, we do have people who come, they come several times. It is for Villa Park residents. They might ask you for your ID, but please come on by and want to make sure that everybody knows that. Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Any other public? If not, the first thing we have on agenda is a public hearing. And the first hearing is a consideration of variance number 2017-01 at 19060 Seravilla Drive. So I'll now open the public hearing. Councilmembers, do you have any questions regarding staff on this item?
Well, can we have a staff report? Can the staff first?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I imagine we will give you an overview. Thank you. Kim, next slide, please. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. As noted, the item before you this evening for your consideration is a variance application, which is a request to allow for an existing 68-inch tall solid block wall and wrought iron fence to exceed the 42-inch maximum requirement within the first 20 feet of the front yard setback area. Next slide, please. Subject property is located at 19060 Seravilla Drive in the E4 zoning district. It is currently improved with a plus minus 2,500 square foot residence with a detached three-car garage. For the past several months, the property owner has renovated the interior and exterior of his residence, constructed a new sidewalk, curb gutter, and portions of the street along the frontage of his property, as well as installing a new wall and wrought iron fence along the front property line and portions of the side property line, which is the subject of this variance application. Next slide, please. The request to deviate from this requirement is to provide the owner of the property with security and privacy, and more importantly, to provide safety for the pedestrians that would use the new sidewalk, particularly during the hours of darkness. In terms of variances, generally, they are granted when it is determined that the strict application of the regulations result in an unnecessary hardship that is inconsistent with the objectives of the zoning ordinance. In this case, the subject property has a unique topography that includes portions that are terraced and other parts that have steep grades from the front property line down to where it levels off. And the grade differential between the top of slope and the toe of slope is approximately between eight and 11 feet. So from a safety standpoint, which is what the property owner was initially concerned about, a three-and-a-half-foot wall would do some, if very little, to prevent an individual from falling onto his property, hence the importance of increasing the height of the On this slide, I attempted to show the approximate location of the new 68-inch tall solid block wall and wrought iron fence along the front and side property lines. The red dashes at the top represents a combination of solid block wall and wrought iron fencing. The blue dashes represent the solid block walls, which are on either side of the driveway, and the yellow dashes represent the wrought iron fence. The staff report provides more details as to the lineal footage for each segment of the block wall and wrought iron fence. I would like to also note that the combination of the solid block wall and wrought iron fencing at the northwest corner of the property is done to maintain the line of sight for the driveway that is located to the property immediately adjacent to this property. Next slide, please. So this slide includes pictures of the solid block wall as seen from Seravilla Drive. The middle picture shows a four-foot wide opening where a swinging gate will be installed in the future. It is important to note that the exterior finishes, the exterior finish of the wall will be a silver quartz flintstone. And here's a sample that the property owner had brought in. I could pass it around if you want to look at it. But it's going to be applied in a random pattern design, if you will. Next slide, please. This slide includes pictures of the solid block wall that are on either side of the driveway. Again, the exterior finishes on these walls will also have the silver quartz flintstone. Next slide. This slide includes pictures of the wrought iron fence as seen from within the property and along Seravilla Drive. Next slide. Guess that was it. This variance request was, as Mayor Potem Colacott mentioned, it was presented at the Community Development and Public Safety Committee on February 7th, 2017. In summary, the committee reviewed and discussed plans with city staff, as well as with the applicant, and was generally in support of the variance request, as well as city staff's recommendation to waive the variance application fee. As required by code, the public hearing notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet radius of the subject property 10 days prior to this meeting. And to date, city staff did field several phone calls and emails, questions from residents that expressed concerns about this application. That concludes my staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Does the council have any questions?
Yes. I have. I have a question for Bill Tarran. Bill, was there a permit issued, a building permit issued for the construction of the block wall and the retaining wall?
No, nothing was.
Was the, was the, were, did the building department review the engineering calculations for the design of the retaining wall?
No, no, we didn't.
Was the, was the block wall built according to the city's standard plans for six foot and less?
Yes, it were.
They were. Did you inspect any of this?
Yes, I did.
So although it was not, the, there were no engineering calculations on the footing, so what did you inspect?
The footings and the open cells of the upper wall.
Of the upper wall, but not the retaining wall?
The lower wall is existing.
Okay, was it-
The upper wall is adjacent to the sidewalk.
Okay, existing since when?
I don't know. I don't know. Way when the property was developed, I guess.
Okay, so it's ancient 20 years, 15, okay.
Yeah.
So you did re- So, you, you did review the foot, inspect the footing for the, the block wall?
Yes.
So, why, if there was no permit issued, why, how was it that you got involved in the inspection?
I'm like the only field inspector that Villa Park has. That wall is on, on public right-of-way.
Okay, that's why.
I don't issue permits, building permits.
Okay.
Public right-of-way.
Okay, yeah, we're asking questions so you don't, we're trying to get a full picture of what transpired.
Yeah, gotcha. That's, that's where the confusion is. It's not a building department issue.
On the?
All public works.
The front wall?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Was that wall part of the site plans and all that were, were provided by the homeowner to the city for approval?
Yes.
And, and the heights and, oop, heights and everything?
Height, I have two questions.
Okay.
The height was on the plan and has approved.
Okay, so the?
No, go ahead.
So, the, the height was approved by our planning department?
No.
Okay, so?
Because you're only allowed forty-two inches in the front yard setback. So, that's what the variance is about.
But the vari, yeah, you, so no variance was applied for before they built it? So, now we've, so now it's built, and now it's after the fact we're coming in and looking at for a variance?
Right. We called the property owner and said, "You can't go any further with these walls because you need a variance. You need to go through planning." And it started the ball rolling.
Okay.
Councilwoman Fessinella?
Well, I'm curious, the questions you're asking, Bob, this went to the CDC, which is, consists of yourself. Is it you, Vince, or is it?
Correct.
So, it's Councilman Rosini and it's Councilman Potem Colacott. So, it went to the CDC. So, these questions should have been asked at that time by you guys, because you, you've now come here and you're approving, telling us to approve this variance. And I want to back up this explanation of this property. This is a piece of property that we witnessed on an infrastructure tour six weeks ago. I've never seen this property. I've never heard about this property. I've never seen the wall. I've never seen a permit, anything. It's a beautiful home. Someone spent a lot of money. I see sidewalks and curbs, and I see, of course, red lights automatically. I see a wall that's half-done, and I start to question it. I go back to all the CDC committees, and I don't see it on a CDC agenda at all. I go back to former Councilman Mills, asking him if he knows about this property. He doesn't either. And the next thing I, I see is a recommendation that they're applying for a variance for something that's already been built, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's already been built, so we're going backwards. And we want the fee waived. Seems kind of odd. Don't have any idea, haven't heard any complaints until last Saturday, or Sunday, I'm not even sure what day it was, when I run into a homeowner who I don't know who has some concern and some questions, not, not concerns, questions. And now I, it appears that there's a lot of questions, and there has been, I don't want to call them complaints, but inquiries on the property. So, at that point, I went, looked at the property and said, "Oh, you know, we need to stop." I'm not quite sure what occurred in the CDC meeting, because the audio recording is not yet on the website, so I can't hear it. I can't talk to the two councilmen because of a Brown Act issue. And at that point, I did go to Councilman Pitts, and I said, "You know what? Can you come take a look at this for me?" Did go to our Mayor Potem, Dawn, and I said, "Hey, can we postpone this for thirty days?" He could not because the CDC was approving it. At this point, now we've got a few complaints, we've got a lot of questions, and I feel like Pandora's box has been opened. And I'd like a timeline to find out what happened here. I know that the gentleman has, who owns the property, and I don't, I know he's here, but I don't know who he is. Hi. We've spent a lot of money, and I don't want to air any bad feelings or complaints out here in the public, but I believe that we need some, I would like some explanation as to how this home got built, how it got to the point where we've got half a wall that was taken off, I guess, or a few feet taken off, and how we're having a variance, working backwards, and why we're trying to waive five thousand dollars in fees for something that was already done.
I'd be glad to answer.
So, that's, that's my comment.
Okay. Any other questions before we take public comment? If not, we can take public comment at this time.
Well, just one quick thing. I know, I know we received several emails in the last few days. I assume either the homeowner or someone's going to address these emails tonight?
We'll do it here. We'll do it in here.
Okay.
All right, we'll take, is the homeowner here that wants to speak on this?
Hi.
Come right up.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Fernando Leoni. I live at 19060 Serra Vila. And I'd like to clear up one question that you presented. I'd like to clear that up first. Regarding my permit, I, when I moved into the house, there was a series of twenty, at least seventy-foot-tall eucalyptus trees rather than a sidewalk, and there are, in a, in a huge ditch that the trees lived in. And that was probably the, the attraction to the house when I first bought it, these huge, beautiful trees I did not want to remove. But the only way I could add more than three hundred square feet to my house is if I, there was a municipal ordinance that required me to build my own sidewalk in front of my house. And I did that. It cost me a hundred thousand dollars. And along with the permits for that sidewalk were footings, calculations, and a fence that was six feet tall, clearly marked on my plans, and my plans were approved. I just didn't, it sounds like I just set out to build my own fence, and I didn't care about anybody coming over there and taking a look. I've worked closely with the building department, with the engineering department, with urban planning, right from the get-go, and this has been a wonderful project for me. And I, I'm an attorney, and I follow the rules, and that's what I did with this, this project. So, I just want you to know that I did get a permit, and it was approved. It just, I guess the calculations for the fencing weren't really brought to my attention. But I assumed I had a permit to build this fence, so I, and the reason why I did a six-foot fence, it's not quite six-foot fence, it's five-foot-eight, was because I have a drop from the edge of the sidewalk onto my property of eleven feet at one, at the end. So, I know that, I worked on a case before where we had issues as to fencing with regards to a freeway overpass, and Caltrans has a law that a public right-of-way freeway overpass has to have a six-foot fence. So, my engineer, who I used, recommended the six-foot fence, and that's why I put him there. So, we started to build the fence. I didn't want to make it look like a fortress, so I used wrought iron on the, on most of it. When we were doing the sidewalk, recommendations were made to increase the width of the sidewalk to eight feet to accommodate a fire hydrant and, on one side, and then a fire pole, a telephone pole on the edge of the property that my neighbor didn't want to spend the money to remove. So, I had to add a three-foot width to that section. So, just in those areas where the sidewalk is, is made wider, do I put the brick fence there, just, and I intend to cover that with a quartzite stone that matches the facades to my garage, and so, so it all blends in. I intend to put the trees back, too, alongside there. My big concern, as I wrote in my statement, is that there's absolutely no lighting on that street at nighttime, and I probably have about fifty or more pedestrians per day that walk on the sidewalk. So, and I've, I've heard all the stories, I've met all the neighbors, and they've all been wonderful, some of them are here, and they all are very thankful for that sidewalk. I added a lot of value to my neigh, to my neighborhood on my street. I've created a safer situation there. I also share territory with the city of Villa Park. And I can, I can, I can tell you as a lawyer that we have a strict liability situation there. If someone gets hurt, it's not going to be whether or not the fence was too short or too high, you're strictly liable. You're, you're covering it if somebody gets hurt there, unless you have, unless you put a big sign where you warn the public of a danger. And nobody's going to see the, the eleven-foot drop at the edge of the property there. And it's currently not fenced where the section where my property meets a portion between another neighbor, and in the middle, there's a, there's a section that I share ownership with the city of Villa Park and the other neighbor. All three of us own this ditch that's eleven-foot-deep, that's open right now. Now, you're going to, I don't know, you're going to put a six-foot section there, and then you're going to expect me to have a forty-two-foot section. It wouldn't look good, first of all, but you have to understand that that side of the street, all the homes are side, that's the side of their homes. It's not, I have the only one where it's the front. So, and I basically have, where it was before, I realize as soon as I moved in, I basically had a, had a big drain, drainage was all going down my driveway into my, into my property. Didn't quite reach the city drain, which is right next to my property, where the city of Villa Park and I, and two other neighbors share that, that property that's just behind the drainage, the, the main drainage. So, you have to, that has to be a six, my neighbor next to me has a six-foot-tall fence that goes down about two-hundred-and-fifty feet with a row of cypress trees that, just behind the, just behind the six-foot fence.
Is it the neighbor on the right facing your property?
If I'm looking out to the street from my property, it's on my right.
It's on Abbott Street. That's the back of Abbott.
Aubrey.
It's the, called as Aubrey. Aubrey, Aubrey, excuse me.
Aubrey, okay.
We're yard.
And I've been in constant contact with that neighbor. We've tried to reach an agreement as to how to address that, that piece of property between ours, between our properties, and we've come up with a solution, and that's to continue the six, his six-foot wall to mine, and we're just going to join him like that. So, my primary concern here is, is safety, and anybody can walk there and see what I'm talking about. I mean, it's, it's, not only is it obvious, I've had the neighbors that walk by there that thank me because, and indicate to me how, what a treacherous, dangerous situation that existed before I tackled that project. And I really appreciate, I really thank the city for offering to pay for the fees for the variance. I didn't ask. Those were offered to me because I had made, and I believe I did make, a very significant contribution to, to the city and to my neighborhood that increased the value significantly. My house was the only one with a country kind of entry to it with rocks and dirt, and on both sides of me, we had sidewalk. And I had the, the opportunity to build the, build the sidewalk, because my family member, a family member is a construction company that does curb and gutter and infrastructure projects, and did, coincidentally, the sidewalk on both sides of me. So, when they came to do the project there, I learned that the, that, that section had a, a budget of quarter of a million dollars to do that work there, and I did it for, for a hundred thousand. I mean, it's not, still a significant amount of money, and, but I believe that I added value to, and safety to, to my neighborhood.
A couple of questions. The, the way that you built the property with the sidewalks and walls and things like that seemed inconsistent with the rest of the properties around Villa Park. Was that a requirement, Ray, for him to, to do this, for, for, for building? To be inconsistent with what the rest of, I mean, we don't have sidewalks everywhere. We have trails and things of that nature, so the requirement for a sidewalk and, you know, these walls and so forth, I, I understand the safety issue of it, but it looks different than anything that, for the most part, that we see in the city.
Well, I can, I can show you areas where there's wrought iron fencing, there's wood fencing, there's brick fencing, all up and down the street.
Oh, it's more.
The reason why I did this initially is so I could remodel my house and add more than three hundred square feet. That's, it's a, it's a requirement in the municipal code.
Okay.
That's why I did it.
And then the transition from the metal fence to the solid fence? No, across the front of your property?
Yes.
I didn't quite understand that and the reasoning behind that.
Oh, it's just so I could have a, an entry kind of focus feature. You, you need to have pilasters on either sides of a door. So, rather than just stick two pilasters with the wrought iron, I tried to make a more cohesive, like a more solid entryway feel.
Okay.
And the, the property to my left, I, since I ostensibly had permission to build six-foot fence, I reached the end of the property line, and I brought it inward a little bit.
Left, you mean, is that Lo, is that Loma?
That's on Loma, right.
That's on Loma.
That's on the right-hand side.
And apparently, and then later, I added another wall so I could put my trash cans. I made it a little enclosure. I found out that my neighbor didn't like that, and that was fine. I took it down. I tore it down. And then when the, the view issue became apparent, I tore down the brick wall, because I haven't filled it, I haven't filled them with cement.
Okay.
And so, when I was told to stop, I stopped, so. But I did remove the section to my, that was on the left of the property, on Loma, that we just talked about, and I removed that, and I, I intend to put the wrought iron on, on that section. And it is very aesthetically pleasing, I, I mean, at least according to my, my taste, so.
Can I, I'm going to go back. You said it was, it was, we had a requirement that you had a sidewalk, but it didn't, the requirement wasn't concrete. I mean, because you have?
No, no.
We have, yeah, we have the horse trail with the DG, you know, to?
Yes.
I'm staring at, at your home to the left-hand side.
Right.
Which is kind of where, which is what we're used to seeing, so.
I was, I put, I put a portion of it with wrought iron and a portion of it, a portion of the fencing would be CMU, which is cement. And I had a choice of using concrete or DG. It's actually more expensive to put the dirt, the dirt there, believe it or not.
Are the retaining walls you have there, was it built the same time as the fence?
The retaining wall there has been built, there's a, see, another issue. And it's a logical assumption to assume that you need retaining walls on the sidewalk to hold up the street.
Yeah.
But below that, on my property, below that, actually five feet below, I, I've had a ninety-foot retaining wall that's, that's six feet tall, that was built in nineteen fifty-nine when the previous owner built it. So, that's, that's the, that's, the rest of, the rest of the walls are garden walls.
Rest of the?
That's the retaining wall.
Rest of the wall is what?
Garden walls. Garden walls.
Garden wall.
Yeah.
What is that?
Well, they're just, they're, they're non-load-bearing, and they're low, they're, they're not as tall. But I can tell you that my cousin, who built that, he put in more cement. He had seven, six or seven truckloads of cement in there reinforced with rebar. It was total overkill.
So, when you purchased the home, it was the DG, I don't even know if there was any horse rail, whatever.
No, it wasn't there.
Okay, the retaining wall was there.
Yes.
The retaining wall is there, and you have trees.
Trees.
And home?
Twenty of them.
And your, and your home is in the back, and you add?
Yes.
You added three hundred feet, and now we have, how tall is the fence in the front?
Fifty-eight inches.
Fifty-eight inches.
I'm sorry. Sixty-eight inches.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight inches, I'm sorry.
I have to say, your home, I, I love seeing, your home is very nice.
Thank you so much.
But I will be blunt in saying that that wall is not attractive at all, and not because?
Wait till you see when it's finished.
And not because you didn't spend, not because you didn't spend the money or get a permit or something, and I'm not quite sure what happened here. And I think that's, I'm not sure if our complaints are because of the variance or complaints are because of the wall. There's a gray line here. I know we're here to talk about variance, but there's a gray line in what we're dealing with, so.
I think it would be very aesthetically pleasing when it's completed. Right now, it looks like Aleppo Syria. I mean, it looks like somebody bombed out there, okay? But once the brick wall is covered with very expensive quartz, quartz stone in, in the random shapes, like several properties around, I could show you, it will look very attractive. And I'm going to have a, a front entry door, a gate that comes at twenty feet in, entry into the gate, into the driveway. I'll have a cedar gate, opening, and I'm going to have trees and, and tall plants all along, all along that border.
On your, on your side, not on the sidewalk.
Right on the side of the, so the, the actual wrought iron fencing will blend, kind of just blend into the trees that I?
But we'll still see the wall. But we'll still see the wall.
And the wall, you'll, only, but you have to understand it's two-hundred-foot span and only twenty-five feet on the right-hand side of the driveway. And about five feet on the other side, just to form like a pilaster effect, so I can have the gate is the block wall portion, just a very, about, less than twenty percent of, of the entire span of the fencing.
Did, you say you met with one of your neighbors, have you met with all your surrounding neighbors and?
Yes.
And talked about your plan to, because there seems to be a considerable amount of opposition to what you're trying to accomplish. And I didn't know if there was any type of compromise with your neighbors or any discussions that had been held with them with regards to, you know, their thoughts and, you know, I, I realize it's your property and that kind of stuff, but.
He's saying no, but I actually had a conversation with him and I asked him, is, I'm, I'm gonna be building this connection piece here where our properties meet. Do you have any recommendations, do you have any kind of plans that you want there, or is any kind of, anything that you want? Because I want it to make, I want it to be pleasing for yourself. And he didn't really, at that time, have any, any opinions whatsoever to share with me. But I've come to learn later that he didn't want to have his view blocked when he drives, when he exits his cars from the garage. So, I completely tore that down. I mean, I, I mean, I could fight this if I, but I, you know, I wanna live in an area where I, I can live with my neighbors. And so, I did it voluntarily, even though I didn't, I didn't put up any kind of fight at all, it cost me five thousand dollars to take it out.
Well, you know, we had some issues in a, in a different part of the city with regards to line of sight when you came to a stop sign. So, I was concerned about that, the garage and blocking the view when someone's trying to claim a car coming down the road, have an accident or something like that.
So, I made it transparent on both sides.
Has that been reviewed and looked at? Okay.
And on the right, on the right-hand side, I've actually got consent from that neighbor to use the extra wood panel, porch panels that we have to, so that there won't even be any color differ, differentiation. It won't look like an obnoxious, clean, new wood portion that connects our, that connects both of our fences. We've actually taken the old pa, panels and reserved, and reserved them and kept them and maintained them so that when we put, we're gonna have them, they're also gonna be double-backed, so it'll look seamless all the way through.
Okay.
And the same height, except his, he has, his, it's his side house. And on the other side, it's my, it's the neighbor's side of his house, so it's not his front of his house. So, I have mine in the front, that's why it's.
Well, one of the, one of the neighbors I visited, and I walked out of their back, on their back porch and looked at the wall that had been built along there, between you and them. And it just seemed like it was extremely high and.
Yeah, well, I took that down.
The thing, things.
I took that down, yeah, I knocked that down. I'm gonna put the wrought iron portions there, so it'll be transparent, see-through.
Well, the cement wall is still there.
All right, this is the, this is the sidewalk.
Uh-huh.
Here's my driveway.
Right, I'm talking about on the left-hand side facing, left-hand side facing your house, facing the property.
Right, I have a five-foot, six-foot portion there just to act as a pilaster. And then the rest of it has been reduced to about thirty-two, forty-two inches, and on top of that, I'm gonna be placing the wrought iron. So, he'll have it here, and here's all wrought iron.
Okay.
Is Mr. Howard here? Yes, okay.
Any more questions?
Well, I wanna hear from Mr. Howard, then I may have some more questions for, for you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Tim Howard, and I reside at nine zero eight two Loma Street here in Villa Park. And I wanted to approach council this evening to speak to you regarding variance two zero one seven dash zero one. We had a, I'm here on short notice. We, we just received a letter from, from planning that this variance was coming before the commission and it had not, and we had no notice that it ever went to the CDC. And frankly, I, I looked at the report and, that was generated for, for, by staff for the CDC, and I didn't see anything regarding engineering, building, planning comments. So, I think that, that in deference to the CDC, Mr. Mayor, that, that those folks didn't have a, an accurate picture of really what they were, they were engaged in, in, in terms of supporting or, or not supporting. I think in the last few weeks, you all have heard from several of our neighbors with regard to the process that we engage in, in Villa Park. And we have a professional staff that we can rely on, the planning department. I think what troubled me the most was that, that the city manager or whomever was responsible for the report had not had any input from any of the neighbors. So, take it, take that comment and do with it as you wish, but I'm not so sure that, that staff has, has guided you as, as, as capably as they could've. With regard to the variance, I understand that everybody has different tastes and, and that we are all trying to, to get along in our community and do what's best. As the community ages and the building stock gets older, we're going to have more and more of these issues. People will be renovating, and, and I think they need to know that there's a process. So, certainly, public work should know that there's a process for walls, gates, things that are visible, trash enclosures, budding neighbors, property lines, those kind of things. Those are addressed in, in our code. And I'm not so sure that, that building, planning got it to have their two cents on, on this matter. Engineering ran with it because there was work done in the public right-of-way, which consisted of a street and a concrete sidewalk that I think is, is inconsistent with what travels up and down that street. The side of the street that, that abuts orange has concrete sidewalks, and frankly, that's orange, that's their, that's their prerogative. It's not ours in Villa Park. So, with regard to the, the variance, I don't, I'm not so sure that, in fact, I, I wouldn't support it at this time because we haven't had planning's input, we haven't had buildings' input on these things. And I'm not so sure that, that the building official has checked the, the part of the garden wall that was scavved on top of the retaining wall and whether or not that addition would add additional load to the wall beneath it. Seems to me it might. So, now we're at a point where we've got these improvements and they've all been built, so what do we do? We, you know, the, the horse is out of the barn, so that's your call. The, there's a number of us that would like to have seen a materials board. Now, what is it gonna look like? Would planning have had input into, into the construction of a, of a wall where we have, where we have an elevation change? Could they have come up with something different to allow for a vine to grow in front of the wall? Could we have put the wall or, or the, the fence line, set it in concrete so that we could have a, a planter underneath it? Could we have done something to, to break it up? Right now, we have something that looks like a Caltrans spec. It works for freeway overpasses, may not be so red-hot for Villa Park. So, you know, with that, I think my five minutes is, is pretty close to, to up, but that's, that's, I think, characterizes my neighbor's thoughts. You know, had, had, had we had the opportunity to have some input, had there been a process, had this not gone on for three years, we might be, find ourselves at a different place. But now, we're leaving it up to you. So, we'd like to, to deny the variance and, and come up with something that may ultimately work better, but that's our position. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
You said deny the variance, what would you think would work better? Given the situation that we're in.
I think that, given the situation that we're in, we need to, you know, I feel for Mr. Leone because he's, he's of the opinion that he has this, this permit that was, that was a permit for off-site improvements and didn't cover onsite. And, and if you're not in this, if you're not in the business and you're pushing forward in order to get your house done to accommodate your family, I can see where things might get swept under the carpet. But I also know that you have a responsibility to your other community members. So, I think where I find myself today, if I'm advising you is, I would say, let's stop, let's take a break, let's get some input from others for people who have, you know, a, a dog in the fight, if you will. And let's come up with something that, that isn't a terrible burden on Mr. Leone, but also lets the people in the neighborhood know that, you know, that there are some conditions put in place. You know, are we gonna plant the, the slope with four or five twenty-four-inch boxes, trees? What's the gate or door going to look like between those, those CMU blocks? What's the material that was grouted back in those voids? I think if Bill, you walked out there, you'd see that, that it's backfilled with stucco. It's a different color than, than concrete, so it's got a colorant in it, so stucco has a different compressive strength than concrete does. All of those things are, you know, questions that, that I would have. But I don't, but I don't think it's, you know, at this point where we are, and it's such a train wreck, and I can lay it at, at staff's feet, but it's such a train wreck that the only thing you can do is just pause right now and get staff to roll up their sleeves and say, hey, guys, you stepped in it, now let's sort it out. And get back to us as council as quickly as possible. What can we do to help our neighbor and, and his surrounding neighbors?
But you as a neighbor, what would you like to see?
I put my faith in, in, and trust in, in our planners. Look, I, I will tell you, I, I develop industrial real estate. I develop a lot of infrastructure. I know, based on years of doing it, that I've got off-site infrastructure work and I have onsite stuff I gotta do. You know, if we, if, if you wanted my, my input, I could sit you down with my landscape architect who's much more qualified than I am and, and try to do something to, to help our neighbor and get him on track. And just get it put in a position such that everybody can buy in and say, yeah, that makes sense, okay, I don't know what the door is gonna look like. You know, I think that the house is a mid-century, it looks, it looks cool, other people don't like it, that's, that's not, that's, I'm neither here nor there. But what I want to know is that, that the street that we have is done correctly, that the sidewalk or trail is something that meets with the community's approval. I think we just have to be a little bit reasonable here. And, and then also, you know, keep the communities best, you know, look out for our, for our neighborhood there.
Mr. Howard, would, the, my original suggestion was that this be postponed and go back, go back to the CDC, because that's, that's where, with notice to.
I think we have, listen.
Notice to surrounding residents, because that's where that stuff is hashed out. Would that be acceptable to you? Because we don't hash that out here.
It's your guys' call.
I understand that.
But, but here's.
And, but, take the time that we're asking you.
You've got all these people. I, I think that, that, that given the time and the horse is out of the barn, now we gotta get Bessie back. But I think that, that these folks could come up with something and, and formulate conditions that we all need as people doing these kind of projects. So, you gotta tell me what you want, and I think if those got formulated, that gives everybody a guideline.
And those conditions normally are hashed out in the CDC meeting, so.
Planning gives them to them, and then the CDC says, check, you're in.
A question for you, this has been going on for some time, have you had any, had you had any discussions or did your neighbors have any discussions with our previous city manager on this project?
Several, several.
And what were the, generally, what were the topic of those conversations and what was the outcome?
Topics ranged from fugitive dust, vector control issues, trash on the site, to.
I'm referring specifically to the, to the fence because that's what's at issue.
Oh, I thought we were, we were revisiting history, I don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
I would tell you that, that the previous city manager listened and who knows if it was ever acted upon.
Were there any discussions regarding the height of the fence?
No one knew what, what it was because we never saw plans. So, as, on a go-forward basis, if somebody's gonna take down and renovate a house extensively, if you look around the corner, the people have fences up and they've secured the property and they've done things like that. I'm sure there are conditions on the plans that say, okay, here's your landscape plan, it's been approved. It includes the installation of twenty-four boxed pepper trees along the, the street front. It'll say something like, use drought-tolerant ground cover to consume fifty percent less water. Those kind of things are conditions that, that contractors and people who do this are familiar with. And they just kinda check and they go on, and they, they know the dance steps, if you will, council member. So, if we had that, I think that helps.
Do you object to the height of the fence or the construction, overall construction?
The height I don't care about, I, he has his reasons for it.
Okay.
You know, like, like the applicant has, has said, his, his house is, is fronting the, is, is turned cattywampus. I mean, it's turned, where everybody else has their side, he's got the front. So, I have a great amount of empathy for trying to figure that out. So, if he wants a six-foot fence and we can break it up with, with pilasters or what planning comes up with, or if we had an architectural review committee, you know, if we could break that two-hundred-foot span up, that, that would be fantastic.
Break it up with what?
I say pilasters, you may say pillasters. Tomato, tomato, right, Mr. Mayor? So, you know, I, I don't know. But, but my concern is the, that we put the cart in front of the horse and, and then we didn't end up with, with a, with a product that, you know, the applicant shouldn't be having to change things mid-stream, he shouldn't, he shouldn't have to be told, hey, you know, this is too high over here, well, I'll knock it down at another great expense to me. It just, it shouldn't have been built. So, there, that's my two cents, and I've gone over my time, but I appreciate.
I'd like to ask one question of staff, correct me if I'm wrong, the rationale that staff is using to recommend this is safety, the height of the fence, correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
Hey, Don, one of my streets looks bad that I built near.
Actually, several of your streets do.
One, one last question.
I have questions.
Oh, no, go ahead, Bob.
Okay, let's see, Ray, the, the, the specific issue of the variance is height only, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, do we have, we don't have.
Okay, do we have, we don't have a design review committee in the city, really?
Be the CDC.
But does, has the CDC ever reviewed design? Uh, it was not.
Homeowners Association.
Exactly, it sounds like.
Not a homeowners association.
And we're not going there.
Yeah.
I mean, I may not like the wall, but he has a right to build it.
Amen.
Absolutely. I think all of us moved a little apart for that reason.
Yeah, I think that's, and that, and we, and as was pointed out, we've got a, a variety of different types of fences along, just along that one street. So really, the, I think the issue that we're meeting on is the, whether we provide a variance on the height, not, not the design, correct?
That's correct.
Let's see, uh, what is the typical height of a safety fence? Is it always that, is it typically that high, or is it some other? I know, I've seen like railings on, you know, balconies and stuff that are more like 42 inches.
Handrail is at 36 inches, just so you know.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about a, a safety fence for like a, a.
Forty-two inches is a guardrail height.
Okay, and is that the height of our standard plan?
Forty-two inches. Uh, speaking of design, would it help you if we had them to have the wrought iron all the way across rather than the big block walls?
You know, the, the wrought iron just tends to get tedious and now, and usually when I, in other cities that I've built, and I've built miles of fencing, and the scale that I do is a lot bigger than residential scale, but I'm sure there is an architect somewhere in the community that one of you fellows know, or ladies know, that could tell you, you know what, usually we put a, a, a post at six-foot intervals or eight-foot intervals on center, 10 feet. Used to be 10 feet on a, uh, on a storm fence. So something like that, I don't know, just to give it some architectural interest. You know? So, so if it were eight feet and there were, and there was something there that, that, that gave some variation, maybe that gets us there, I don't know. But I sure would have liked to have seen the process.
Okay.
Well, um.
Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate both sides, but I, as staff has pointed out correctly, the issue, the variance is the height of the fence, not the design.
Well, the issue is the height of the fence, but, um, as a condition of an approval, you can add conditions that mitigate the impact of your approval. So, you know, if you have a six-foot high, uh, fence and it's necessitated because of the physical characteristics of the property, i.e. the slope, hence you need the higher height for the safety issues enunciated. You can still put conditions on the project that mitigate that stark aesthetic look, that is within your purview. It doesn't make us a design review committee or an architectural committee, that's within the purview of the conditioning authority.
Okay.
Can I add something here?
Come, come right on up.
I need my mouth shut. I haven't submitted any landscape plans. I, I'm still on the fence, and I submitted my fence plans eight months ago. Now, I keep having to rebuild it, but, uh, no one ever told me that it has to look a certain way. Everybody thought it was fine. I built just a very small portion of it in brick, so I can have an entryway feature in my property. It's gonna be covered in $3,000 worth of stone. I'm gonna have a complete, uh, array of plant, plantings, all in the front, that are, uh, part and, part and parcel of that style of home. I, I, I just can't wait to submit to, to you my landscape and irrigation plans, but, and I would be done, I would be there now if I didn't have to wait for a city council meeting. If I knew I needed a city council meeting to build my fence, I would've had that first. I've just followed, I, I followed the book on everything. I went to the city, I got my permits, the very first day I met Bill, and he's no, he's quite a formidable, uh, uh, person to meet on planning. I had a couple of mistakes there, and then my very first day was, I go, wow, I, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to do this by myself. And we got to be friends, and he made suggestions all the way. I haven't been, it sounds like I've been cavalier or, at the best negligent in trying to come up with fencing on, on my property. I've just followed, followed the book, and I've met with everybody, that everybody's been helpful, cordial, uh, I'm trying to please everybody, but the last thing in the world I thought, as I would need to please all my neighbors, aesthetic concerns. I mean, we're talking about, it's a safety issue here, and I have to worry about what color my posies are in the front. Now, if you want me to do it a certain way, let me submit my landscaping plans, which I'm, I'm, I intend to do as soon as I get my, my wrought iron on, ready to go, and, and you'll see it. And I, and I intend to soften the views of the fencing, cause I'm gonna have plants in front of it. I have trees, palm trees that are gonna go in front of, right behind the wrought iron, which will totally obliterate the whole issue. You won't even see it, cause it'll be a row of plant, of plantings on the other side of it. I have two homes that are right in front of me, and I have a wall of glass. I have a, a 35-foot wall of glass, it's 35 by 14. You see, they're picture windows, that's the front of my house. And both, the neighbors in front of me look straight into my fishbowl, and that's gonna be all covered. So, I have a very unique situation here, and that's part of the, the, the test that you have to read. Do I fulfill that requirement that I have special needs, my property has special needs, where I have to have this alternative, this variance, so that I can have a safe home? So I don't have to worry about insurance concerns, lawsuits, people killing themselves, people have walked into that ditch. People have all, the neighbor, I've got to talk to everybody. There have been a, a number of pedestrian accidents right in front of my house before I lived there, and I, and there's not gonna be one while I'm living there, because I'm gonna have a fence there that nobody, I mean, I've seen some situations where, uh, in the, in my profession, where injuries, injuries have occurred when dogs jump over the fence, these 30, 40, the 42-inch fence, and the owner's trying to retrieve their pets, and they go over the fence to get them. That's not gonna happen in my property, cause that's an 11-foot drop. They're gonna land on their head and they're gonna die. And you guys are gonna get sued and I'm gonna get sued, cause that's part of your property there, too. We share a, a portion of the, uh, uh, territory between the two properties, and we've got to cover that up. I've been trying to cover it up for weeks, but, you know, every, every week I get a, there's a new, there's a new proposal. And, uh, so, uh, we've come up with a proposal now with the city, that they, they're, they, city manager and I have discussed, the neighbors agreed to it, I've, um, and that, hopefully we can get this done so I can put that up before somebody else falls in that ditch. Thanks, any, any other questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
I don't have a question, Jim, I.
Yeah, I had a question. Some of your neighbors object to the, the wall you have up there, said it makes it look more like a, you know, kind of a public storage or something.
Well, it, it does now, cause it has no landscaping, it's not covered.
I understand that, but what, my question is, would you be object to having wrought iron all the way across?
Well, it would look cheaper. It's, it's a very long span now. It's 120 feet of wrought iron fencing. There's only 20 feet of a, a block that creates an entryway feature into, into my property, where I'm gonna have at the end of that, 20 feet down, my gate. So you have to have something very, very strong there to attach, uh, to attach the pillars, so that you can attach the fencing to the pilaster. So it, it, it creates a, a stronger feel for the entryway. It, it creates a little bit of prominence. It's not any higher than the wrought iron, and it's not gonna look any different when I have the plants in front, see, in front of the, this is another important feature, cause you don't have the landscaping. Everybody seems to be concerned about what it looks like, and I haven't even had a chance to submit my landscaping plans. But in front of all the brick features, there are, there are, and no one's mentioned this, that, that there are, uh, planter areas in front of the, the brick, the brick portions. So in front of, in front of the brick portions, there'll be plantings. So it's not, you're not gonna just look at the brick wall, you're gonna see that with pygmy palms in front of it, and some, uh, cypress plants, and papyrus plants.
If I could, if I may interject.
Yeah.
That's, we're back to the basic issue, is that you're correct. We're talking, everyone's talking about the plantings and the aesthetics look. Had there been proper notice for the residents to come to the CDC, this is where this would have come out.
I've done everything I know.
And I understand that.
I mean, I didn't read the legis, the code on that.
You showed up, but nobody else had the opportunity to come.
I've come, I've done, I've been here at moments' notice. Every time everybody had a question, I've come down there.
You were there, but the residents didn't get the notices. So that's where it has to go back. It's not for us to determine, it needs to have, there needs to be a public notice.
Alright, notice was sent out.
But it wasn't.
Under, under the rules, and we counted them at the CDC meeting.
It actually wasn't sent out under the rules, but that's not, that's not your mistake, because.
Well, we discussed that, if, whether or not there was enough time.
Because there was enough time for that to be sent out to the residents.
And apparently we got it out in time, cause I went and sent, sent out, I spent $250 getting the mailing list for my neighbors.
Why, why did you do that?
So that you can do the mailing. I have to get the addresses, the labels.
And when was that notice sent out?
Within the statutory time.
You're talking for this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I'm talking about the CDC meeting. That's where, that.
Prior notice.
Yeah, they did not, the staff didn't send out the, the notice.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're going, everything you're discussing right now is, is correct.
The aesthetics?
But that, but that discussion would've taken place at the CDC. And at that time, at that time, when you asked the staff, no one else is here, we should've found out why no one else was there, cause I mean, it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, and, and we did.
And we gave more notice for a possible stop sign on patrician last month.
Well, actually.
And on Feather Hill and Dodson, we gave notice almost 500 feet. We need to give people notice.
I agree.
For the CDC meeting, and we always have. So somewhere there was a break in communication, something happened, um, and I understand it, cause everything you're saying is what the neighbor should've heard.
No, assuming, arguendo, that we had a CDC meeting where everybody could show up, the same thing.
Right.
If, if, no, I'm saying that if we had one, let's assume that we had one, and hypothetical, everybody would've showed up and the same things would've been said. Mr. Howard would've stood, stood up and, and mentioned his concerns about aesthetics. And, once again, the purpose of this is for height, and I don't know, if we would've just discussed height issues, or.
Right, but the, but the committee would then, if they wanted to recommend it to the council, would've said, we recommend it with ficus trees in front of it, or pansies, or whatever, whatever it might be.
Well, I'm gonna have a, I'm gonna have a landscape plan very soon.
Yeah.
And we can all sit around and drink coffee and, and discuss whether we want, uh, which kind of palm trees we want out there. I'll make everybody happy. That's, I'm not out there to try to do something where I'm the only one in the world who, this means something to, okay? I mean, this means a lot to me to live in this city, it meant, it meant a lot to me to be able to give something back as far as an expensive sidewalk, when there was just a, a very dangerous road hazard right there.
I actually disagree with you on that.
Well, did you understand, you, you don't understand what I did.
Oh, no, I saw.
Widen the road, 10 feet.
But that's not, that's not, that's not the issue here, so we don't need to go.
Widing the road makes it very, a lot safer, wouldn't you agree?
Bill, is there other, are there other homeowners here that?
No, is, uh, yeah, okay, we have some other speakers here then. Put a speaker card, but come on up.
Mayor, Council? I'm getting over cold, so excuse my voice.
Your name and, name and address.
Cynthia Muse, and I live across the street at 19041 Saravilla. And, um, I am the one who's gonna be staring at the six-foot tall wall, or five, five-foot A, whatever it is. And, um, I do have a problem with the variance. I don't think that, um, that it is established that we need a wall of that height, even though he has a slope on the other side of his property. I don't think it's consistent with the aesthetic of Villa Park. I think there's several other properties who have forward-facing yards on Saravilla Drive that have slopes that are very similar to his slope, and they have the standard height fence. They have a large gate, they might have pilasters at the point of entry to the driveway with a gate, but the yard is, is defined by the 42-inch wall with, with a design that would be more consistent with the aesthetic, with a horse trail in front, whatever you call that material and the wood fence. And, um, I think it would be, you know, shocking for the, for, even with this finish. I mean, this scares me to death. We've been subject to the construction of this house for the last three years. I'm shocked at many, many of the things that have gotten approved, but I always assumed the city was approving it, that it was all done according, according to code and according to plan. So I didn't think that it wasn't approved, so when we got the notice on the application for variance, I started looking at the application, I thought, oh my gosh, we have some chance to stop this. I think we need to go back, and it needs to be, it needs to be, I'm sorry that he did it, I'm sorry that it got this far, I'm sorry that it snowballed into this. If you let me right now go back to the eucalyptus trees and the blind curb that was there, I'd take it in a heartbeat. It was beautiful. All of Center Street is beautiful to me, I walk down it every day with my dog. Eucalyptus line, no curb, no sidewalk, nobody needs a sidewalk down there. This is Villa Park. We don't need sidewalks in Villa Park, we're not orange, we're not Huntington Beach, we're not gonna be a bunch of six-foot walls housing in our homes with concrete sidewalks. Nobody came here for that. And so I would, I have read all the documents, and I feel it doesn't meet the standard for you guys giving a variance. I've read the code and I've read the, um, the residential guide handbook, and I think if you follow the residential guide handbook, you cannot allow the variance, because it doesn't meet, doesn't meet any of the first three paragraphs, well, it meets one maybe, and it doesn't meet the last two, and that's the standard. And it's, it's findings of fact, so it needs to be findings of fact that he meets the first three and one of the last two paragraphs. It's not subjective opinion from people that he's become friends with over the course of the three years of developing this project. So, it's my opinion, and I think given enough time, it'd be the opinion of many other people, that what's happened is wrong and it needs to be rectified.
Okay.
And even if it is a hardship to, to the homeowner.
So your concern specifically is the, the height variance?
The height and the aesthetic. I mean, I'm, I've lived here for, since 212, it was beautiful to look across my street before. It was beautiful, eucalyptus trees, it was gorgeous, it's Villa Park. Now I'm looking at a storage lot, it looks like it's terrible. It's a giant concrete sidewalk, huge wall that may eventually be covered with something with odd planting in front of it, a giant, what sounds like to be a giant gate for the driveway, and wrought iron. It, it, I, I see no other examples of construction like this in Villa Park, none. I've looked, occasionally on a side yard, you'll see a, a defining high wall, but no front yards. And it is his front yard, and we have other front yards in Villa Park that face Saravilla, so.
I've got a question of staff. Ray, did you, uh, review the height?
Thank you.
Before the construction?
No, I didn't.
Uh, when did you review the height and to determine if variance was needed?
Well, when, when I finally got the plans, I know, I, you know, it was, it was at six feet.
When it was already constructed? Okay, so who actually approved the height of the fence and the construction of the sidewalk?
Engineering, yes. It was part of the street improvement, and it showed the, the height of the wall as six-foot.
Okay. Did you, you didn't review that with, uh, planning before you approved a six-foot fence?
Uh, no, at that time, we were concentrating on the, the requirement for widening the street and.
Isn't the overall requirement to meet all the city standards?
Correct, I guess we did, uh, miss it as, uh, the requirement, since the, one of the properties on the adjacent had a fence of six-foot, because it is the back of the property. And so, we took it as it is the same height of that existing fence.
But you didn't review that decision or that, with planning to?
As I said, no, we, we approved it as a, from an engineering standpoint, and planning did not approve that portion of the height.
Uh, did you require a concrete sidewalk, or did?
Yes, yes, I did. It is, you know, on Saravilla, there is a, uh, various different sidewalk treatment, such as concrete, some is without sidewalk, some with the DG.
Do we have concrete sidewalks on the Villa Park side?
On, yes, there are, in certain areas, there is, down further. In that portion of that, there is a catch basin which is concrete, existing concrete on it, and also, since it's gonna be a, the big portion of the, a driveway, the frontage, so we felt. so we felt that, hey, that should be then continued as a complete concrete sidewalk. So it wouldn't be, you know, concrete, and then DJ, and then concrete, and a small portion of DJ. So it would be a, but better as aesthetically and also from an engineering to have a continuous concrete sidewalk.
Was Jared aware of this project?
Uh, yes. Yes, we were, matter of fact, several times, we went out to the field.
Okay, so our city engineer and our city manager were fully aware of the requirements and issued the permit, so what he has constructed is fully consistent with what the city has approved.
What's the plans on?
Okay, back to the councils. Any discussion, council members?
Well, I'm actually gonna make a motion, we can continue, make a motion to send this back to the CDC with notification to the homeowners, so they, you can come back, have them discuss the approval of the variance, but how that approval can be done to please the neighbors.
How can be done to do what?
How can be done to please the neighbors.
Oh, okay.
Because I realize that the CDC did approve it, but I think that there's another step that needs to be taken, such as, you know, planting and so on, and I believe that the neighbors need to be able to be heard. And it's certainly been documented that they have not been notified. So we did have two here. Thirty days isn't gonna hurt anyone, but I think it's important for the neighbors, I think it's important for the homeowner, who has spent so much money to go in there. I don't wanna see three or four neighbors not talk to each other because of possibly a mistake that the city has made, possibly, that that's occurred. And 30 days for them to come back to the CDC and maybe air out some differences, get it taken care of, and come back to the council. So that, that's my motion.
Yeah, and I would support that. And I second. And I think also, we need to recognize that, you know, our city staff has already issued a permit that, you know, so that what he's done apparently is fully consistent with what you, the city has already approved, or the city, our city staff has approved. So I think we've got kind of a difficult not-to-un tie.
I, I agree.
But I think that, I agree that, and I've, as we indicated in the CDC meeting this, this month, yes, notification has to be provided upfront. I don't know why it wasn't provided upfront. Maybe it was because of the transition between the city manager, whatever, but, yeah, residents need input in these decisions early on, and staff needs to be admonished to please, you know, if you've got a planning issue, don't try and deal with it in engineering, and if you've got an engineering issue, don't try to deal with it in planning, so that we don't end, end up in these embarrassing situations. But anyway, I second your motion, and.
Okay.
Look, look forward to meeting with all the, the homeowners.
Okay, well, motion is second. Don, will you call, for roll call vote?
Councilwoman Fessenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Protemkalak?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Do, do we, Mayor, if I may, do we, is there a date already set for the next CDC meeting? And if we have that date?
You know, when is that, the schedule for that meeting?
It's Monday, March 6, at 5:00 p.m.
Yeah, so you won't have an opportunity for a 30-day notice, so maybe we should continue it, with your approval to the April CDC meeting, so that we can get a 30-day notice out.
The CDC can meet whenever they want. I mean, Greg and I used to meet as needed to the residents, you know, to assist the residents, so that would be up to the committee. It doesn't make.
Well, by the time we figure out 30 days, it's, you know, that's 37 days.
I'm gonna leave that up to you guys.
Well, my, my understanding is, this meeting has been publicly noticed. Since this is a publicly noticed meeting, we can, from this meeting, continue it to another date, as long as we state what that date is. So we don't have to do a 30-day notice for the next CDC. We don't, but if the council wants to, it could, but we could do it to the March 1, and then have it come back at the next city council meeting as well. But it's at the discretion of the maker and seconder of the motion and the rest of the council.
Yeah, I'd like to see the, the full 30-day notice out to, you know, so that everybody, you know, particularly since there is a, we did not provide notice at the last CDC meeting. Give them a full 30 days, yeah, so they'll get 37 days if we go to the April 6 meeting, I guess, of the CDC, and.
And I'm not sure all the affected parties are here tonight to, to speak to.
I agree, yeah.
You know, the people that I met with are not here tonight, and voiced some concerns and, and some, you know, some things, and we looked at things together. So I think it would be better served if everyone were involved, were a part of this process.
Is that okay with the maker of the motion?
That's fine, yes.
And is that the consensus of the council as well?
Yes.
We'll let the record reflect 5-0 on that.
Okay.
So it would come back at the April?
April meeting.
April, April 3 meeting, Monday, April 3, at 5:00 p.m.
April 3, okay.
And then it would come back at the following city council meeting, which is?
On April 25.
If, if the committee recommends it to come back.
Right.
Yeah, so that, that's not a given, given.
It could be continued to a different.
Okay.
We're good.
All right. And now we'll consider the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and usually enacted by one motion, approved and recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you'd like to remove from the consent calendar?
I would like to remove 5 and 11.
5 and 11.
Any members of the public would like to pull anything from the consent calendar? If not, can I get a motion to approve the balance of the items?
So moved.
That was second?
Second.
Been moved and second. Don, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilwoman Fessenelli?
Yes.
I'm convinced.
Yes.
Councilman Rosini? Yes.
Mayor Protemkalak?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, item number five, I actually, I have a question. I'm not sure there's a good answer. There was, let's see, page, I guess it's page two, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4. It is the monthly statement from the Agency Investment Fund. There was a transfer on, anyway, on 113 for $410,000. The authorized caller was Bill, and that, it's supposed to be, is there a second? Who's, who's the second person who authorizes these transfers?
It would, it would be the, the committee member on the Budget and Finance, which is Bob Kalak. They're both, they're both signers.
Okay, so this transfer that's on this, it has Bill, Nelson, did you sign something for, I'm just trying to look at some sort of protocol, that, just confirming a protocol. Did you sign something to second that?
I've signed a number of transfers, but I don't remember all the ones, which ones in detail. I have to go back and take a look at the.
Well, there's only one that's for $410,000, so I thought maybe.
What, what occurs is I, on the, how the city needs money, is I create a, a status of where our funds are, what we need to do for what payment or whatnot. This is basically because of our, our property tax came in. And so we don't want $410 sitting in our checking account, because we get no interest, so.
Oh, and I, I don't have a problem with it was done, but given what was occurring in Placentia, I hate to bring that up, you know, I would like to see, usually there's two people who would have the authorization, and typically, it would be the city manager.
Right.
And it would be someone from Budget and Finance, but since we have an interim, Don wasn't taking on that role of monetary, so that's why I'm asking who the second person was that knew about this.
Right, so, so I present it to the, the Budget and Finance Chair, who is authorized. They won't take a call from me, they won't, they'll take a call from either Bill or, or Bob. And, and then the process goes through. It's only one signer for the transfer, and it's only between our two accounts.
Okay.
It only goes from the checking to the investment, and the investment to the checking. That's the only transfer that's allowed.
Okay, so then, Councilman Kalak?
He doesn't have, he has to second.
He didn't, he didn't look at anything like that.
He doesn't have to second that, no, he's, he's signed, he's talking about signing all of the checks that are in relation to that transfer. So he's, the transfers are with them, but there's only one required signature, because it is between one, two funds.
Between our, between our accounts.
One, just good.
And then that's, that's the one where they call me up, don't they, verify.
Yes, yes. They call you, send an email.
Call me up to verify as well.
Good, and that, and I pulled that just for matter transparency, so everyone knows that we have, we have a, we have a good checking balance, is what that's for.
Of course we do.
So, there you go.
Okay.
Right, that's a big, and I move it.
Okay.
With that explanation, thank you, Michelle.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved and second. Could we have a roll call?
Councilwoman Fessenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini? Yes.
Mayor Protemkalak?
Yes.
Yes. Next is item 11.
Item 11, I'm not sure why this is on here. It's a recommendation to him, point, Mayor Protemkalak to the Water Committee for ACCOC, but we don't need to have council approval for these committees at all. I verify that with ACCOC, has nothing to do with us. Anyone from this council can apply to be on these boards. They don't need approval, they don't need resolutions, they don't need anything. It's an independent, it's an independent position. So I called, in fact, Heather, I spoke with her this morning, I also spoke with her legislative staff. So I wasn't sure if maybe this was put on here because somebody didn't know that.
I'll tell you why it's put on there. I asked for it to be put on there. They wrote me and asked me for a council member to serve on the Water Committee, and I recommended Bob, and I thought it would be appropriate that I notified the council, that's what I did.
They wrote you?
Yeah.
I mean, because all of us, all of, I got that, I mean, I got that too. I got, I got a letter that said it could be on the, on that too, and if I want to, I could do it also, but I wouldn't have to come to.
It was, it was not a letter asking me to be on it, it was asking me to appoint someone to, to the committee.
Is that in here?
I don't know if it's in there.
And did you ask anyone else then?
No.
Okay, well, it doesn't need a resolution from this council. Doesn't require it.
Well, I didn't know whether it required or not, I just thought the safe thing to do would be to put it on there.
I don't think we should, we should, I don't think we need, we don't need to do that. I mean, this is an, this is a board that Councilman Kalak can sit on if they accept him, and it has nothing to do with us, so we shouldn't kind of meddle in it. What board sees on is really none of our concern.
That's fine then.
Okay.
We don't have to prove this then.
Okay, so I, what do we do? I move, make it moved?
Well, what, wait a minute, so the letter in the, I apologize, Mayor. The second paragraph says, I respectfully ask that your city council consider making an official permanent appointment to the ACCOC Water Committee, so.
Right, but I spoke, I did speak with ACCOC, that letter is probably incorrect. There is nothing whatsoever that requires that the city make a resolution to do it, that they don't, they don't want.
You don't have to do a resolution.
That's, that's the only information I had.
Yeah, no, I understand.
It was a letter that says, they're asking the council to officially appoint somebody, and that's what I did. So if the letter, if the letter's wrong, it's, but that's all I have to go on, is the letter, and I thought it was just a simple thing. Ask Bob, I know he has water experience.
Well, maybe we ought to continue it and find out some information from ACCOC, because I actually went to them. We do not, they don't require it, they don't want.
But, but, all I have to go by is what the letter says. What does the letter say?
And the letter's from whom?
The letter says, I respectfully, it's from, who is it from? It's from Alan, from, oh, yeah, City of Tuscan.
And Bernstein is another city councilman, so we, we went, you have to go straight to the source.
Well, Al, Al Murray is president of the organization.
Correct, and you don't need, you do not need a recommendation.
That's, that's not what the letter says, though.
You do not, well, the letters, you need, then we need to go back and clarify it, because.
If the, if the council doesn't think I need approval to appoint him, then we won't do it.
You don't need to appoint him.
Well, we don't do it, we, we'll skip that one then.
Thank you.
Okay. I just thought from the letter, that, that's what I needed to do.
I, that's what the letter says, that's all I know.
Yeah, okay, that's all I know.
And Alan's the chairman of the committee.
Yeah, I don't see what the big deal is. I, I just, why not approve it?
Somebody make a motion if there's an action requested.
I make, I make a motion that we do not, we do not get into the practice of making appointments to boards that don't require council approval, because that, you, this organization does not require that. So we should not get into the habit of doing that when they don't require it.
But the, the letter requires that, that's what the letter says.
Do you need a resolution for you?
Then I have corrected Mr. Bernstein, and I will call him tomorrow and tell him that he has made an error.
There's, for the council's consideration, there's a difference between a resolution and just an appointment. There's only certain entities that are special, like OCFA.
Yeah.
That actually need an actual resolution for an appointment. Most of the other ones, you just appoint, and that's, my understanding is usually, you know, they like a council to appoint someone.
Right, and this organization doesn't.
I could be wrong, haven't talked to Alan, haven't talked to Al, haven't talked to anybody named Al.
Well, actually, I spoke with Heather, which is the CFO.
Okay, so, I don't think it's, well, I defer to the council, whatever you want to do.
I, I put on here, I would prefer that you appoint him to the committee, that would be my preference.
Make a motion?
Yes, I'll make that. Well, she's already made a motion. I'm gonna share a second, but I move that we approve item number 11.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Fessenelli?
No.
Councilman Pitts?
Um.
And I will be objecting to the board of directors also.
Councilman Pitts?
Um, no.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Mayor Protemkalak?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll move on to old business. Our first item of old biz proposal for strategic planning. We'll have a staff report, and I think, we will have a staff report on this one first. And we will, I think you have a presentation as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and the audience, the audience may have seen the, the letter. And this was an item that was a part of the council's intention, by a mayor requested item and approved, and we, the mayor and I have been working with a couple of different proposals. And Jim's firm, we felt fits the best with this council. And he's here to make a little presentation to you and answer your questions about this.
Get violent.
Jim?
Good evening. I'm Jim McCombe, I'm the managing director of Wildcard Strategy. I see the room's emptied out tonight, so obviously, a lot of people don't think strategic planning is as riveting a topic as I do, but I've, I've lived this for the last 35 years of my life, and during that time, I, I came to two conclusions about strategic plans. The first is that it's incredibly important to build it on a vision, and to make that and to make that vision the definition of success for the organization, be it government, nonprofit, or a business. And the second thing that's important, that many strategic planners don't think about even today, concerns the name of my company, which is Wildcards. A wildcard is, it can be a product, it can be an occurrence, it can be virtually anything that occurs in a split second and changes life as we know it, because we weren't anticipating it. And in my practice of strategic planning, not only do I focus on the vision, which all planners do, but as a part of the process, I believe as we go, we need to build in some anticipation of what some of the wild cards might be that we may have to face. And certainly, cities might face those wild cards from the legislature, the economy, changing state of technology, aging infrastructure, there, there are lots of different potential wild cards that might leap up. But, I start with this because I want you to realize that you're not contemplating hiring some wild guy here that advises gamblers on how to win in Las Vegas, or advises sports teams on how to make the playoffs, which are the two things people always ask me about when they, they see wild cards. Wild cards, what do you do? But, wild cards really are a very serious part of this process, and that's, that's why I start with that. Uh, I was asked to make this presentation tonight, and I, I don't really have a lot of new material, but I have six slides that essentially, uh, encapsulate what was in the proposal that each of you received, and will hopefully for, for the audience that hasn't seen that proposal, give them a flavor for what we're really trying to do here, so. Okay, first thing, I tried to anticipate what some questions might be that the council might have. And, uh, I have actually been a city council member myself, so some of these are questions that, that I've in fact asked in the past. Why do we need a strategic plan? What might it do for Villa Park? What's the time commitment that you're gonna ask of the five of us to do this? And equally as important, what's the time commitment for city staff? They, they already have a lot to do, a lot on their plate. So, to answer the first couple of questions, I, I would first mention to you that as, as you contemplated running for the city council, I'm guessing that you made the decision to do that because you had a vision of some sort, for a future that you wanted to see happen for the city of Villa Park. Or perhaps that future's already here, but your vision was to maintain that into the future, which, which can be as difficult as, as defining a new future, frankly. And likewise, one thing that I share with you is I've also served in elective office, and I also had a vision. And, and I think virtually everyone in this room probably has a vision for the city, for their family, for their career, for, for all aspects of their life. And oftentimes, that vision gets lost, because we don't have a vehicle to make sure it happens. And that's what a strategic plan does. It quantifies that vision, it provides a path to achieve it, which is called strategy, and then action steps that in fact bring it about, be it a three-year vision or a five-year vision. Generally nowadays, you don't see strategic plans for much longer than five years, because it's just too hard to project beyond that. But, uh, that, I believe, is why Villa Park and every other city needs a strategic plan, and in fact, most cities have them. In terms of what it might do specifically for Villa Park, a few weeks ago, you all took an infrastructure tour, and one of the things you looked at was a collapsed drainage pipe, I believe.
Had not collapsed yet.
Oh, not collapsed yet, but getting close?
A week later.
Okay, well, exactly, and that's, and that's why I bring it up, because it, it's a wildcard in the sense that there may not be the budget to fix that right now, so it causes, uh, causes some concerns there. And certainly, if, if there's a strategic...
No concern here, there, I know.
I'm sorry?
No, no concerns there.
Okay, well, great.
We don't want anyone hearing that part.
Okay, and I'm speculating here, I'm not stating facts. But, what a strategic plan will do there is during the process, we will contemplate not only that wildcard, but what are some other ones, and what might we need to do today to make sure that we get the result we want tomorrow, or at some point in the future. Uh, the other thing it'll do for Villa Park is, uh, when I began to, to write this, this bid, I came and I met with the interim city manager and the mayor, and after I met with them, I spent some time outside here, wandering around, going into some of the businesses, went up to some people in the parking lot, and after I convinced them I wasn't a mugger, I, I was asking the question, "What is it you like about living here?" I'm, I'm contemplating moving to the area. I don't live here, I'm just visiting today, I'm contemplating moving to the area. What is it you like about living here? And I, I probably talked to a dozen people, and the answer I got virtually every time was, "I like the quality of life that is here." And a strategic plan can guarantee that if the quality of life you have today is the one you want five years from now, that you'll still have it, because we'll be planning to make sure that happens. And if there's some aspect of quality of life that maybe you don't have today, again, the strategic plan will help us move to whatever that, that goal is. And, and so, I, I think both of those points make a strong case for what it will do for the city. Terms of time commitment, I stated in the proposal, between now and the thirtieth of June, my estimate is, uh, each individual council member might spend eighteen to twenty hours on this process over the next four months. Terms of city staff, about that same period of time, plus, uh, another six hours or so for the city manager, as we sit down to, to develop some action steps at the end of this process. And then in terms of the amount of time that staff would spend going forward, that's hard to predict right now, because it depends on what's in the plan. Um, but, my experience has been in thirty-five years with other clients, that the amount of time that staff spends is never excessive, given the results in the end, so. Okay, won't spend a lot of time on this, but these are some, what I call fundamental planning truths, that, that this very same list appeared in the, uh, proposal that I gave you. Uh, one thing that I, I do want to flesh out a little bit, since it may not be totally clear, is the last point that says, "This is your plan, not mine." Now, virtually every strategic plan you will see, whether it's a government, organization, or a nonprofit, or a business, has the name of the company that did the strategic plan at the bottom. Your strategic plan will not have my name on the cover or anywhere else in it, because it's not an advertising piece for me, it's your strategic plan. Also, there are some times that planning facilitators will come in, they've got their own idea maybe of what the city's vision should be. And as the discussion flows over the course of the process, they subtly interject things to lead the group a certain way. I don't do that, because I have no vision for the future of the city of Villa Park. My role is to facilitate, to ask the right questions of you all throughout the process, to draw out of you what you'd like to see happen for the future of the city. Uh, environmental scanning is never the first planning step. The reason I don't do that, and I'm one of the few planners that doesn't, is we need to have the vision step first. Otherwise, if we do the environmental scan, and we find out what's possible and what isn't possible, it poisons the well of the decision makers, and all of a sudden, they don't believe any longer that anything is possible. And in fact, anything is. Things that occur out there in the environment typically impact strategy, which is the path division. They don't impact your vision generally. Uh, and a good point I use to illustrate that is, a lot of the companies that had significant losses of employees when the towers came down on nine eleven, many of them didn't change their vision one iota. They still, for their company, were headed toward a particular destination, even though this horrible thing had happened along the way and had impacted their company. What it did was it impacted the path they took from there to get to the vision. Um, the only other one I think I'll mention is strategic planning is critical for government because it provides stability and continuity. Um, as you know, in government, faces change a lot. The faces in the seats change, and in Villa Park, perhaps more often than not, because of the unique way you have of, of limiting terms here, where service is limited, and then the person cannot come back later, which they can in, in virtually every other city. So, service is very limited, faces change often, and the strategic plan operates as kind of a steadying influence, because the vision is out there, and that's essentially your gift to the future of the city. Now, that's not to say that during the annual planning review, parts of that plan don't get tweaked going forward, but essentially the direction is set, and, uh, that provides stability and continuity. Okay, this, this I'm not gonna cover every bullet, because I realize it's late, and I, I don't, don't want us to be here a long time, and I'd, I'd like to leave time to answer your questions. But essentially, this process has two phases, which I'll show you in graphic format in the next two slides. But, the first phase is the planning phase, in which the council is primarily involved. The second phase is the implementation stage, where the staff is primarily involved. These are the steps that you would be involved in during that planning phase. Four steps. Plan to plan, which is kind of an organizational phase. Uh, there's an optional strategic thinking workshop, if the council would like to schedule that for itself and, and city staff. That is actually outside this bid, I don't charge for that. I, I will do it if, if the city is interested. If not, it's, it's not an automatic part of, of the proposal. Uh, then community forum. I, I heard more than once that this is a community where the people like to be involved in the decisions, and I think I saw that firsthand a few minutes ago. And so, we built two community forums into the proposal. The first to take testimony from residents as to what they would like to see, what their vision for the future of the city is, and then also what their thoughts are on the strengths and weaknesses, and opportunities and challenges that, that may face the city, just from their, their personal perspective. And we gather all of that, and we use the vision piece in our first planning session, and then the rest of what they tell us, we're gonna use in the second planning session, which is when essentially we're talking about that environmental scan. Uh, the second community forum can either be for overflow from the first, if we have lots of people wanting to talk and we just simply run out of time, or the council can use it later in the process, if you'd like to see the plan presented publicly to the community. That would be an opportunity to do that, uh, if, if you so choose, that's up to you. Uh, defining the vision in step two essentially is the first planning, uh, session, where we do a couple of things. We look at the existing, uh, city mission statement and values, and the council simply reconfirms that, yes, this is our mission, we don't think it's changed since this was written. Yes, these are our core values by which we make decisions and, and conduct the behavior of government. We don't think those should change. We move on then to the vision. And I have a visioning exercise, which I lead all of you through. There's some pre-work to that session, so we can keep it to four hours, but we can accomplish a lot during that particular session. Uh, step three, state of the city, that's where we go through a comprehensive current state assessment, which I will research and present to you. Uh, we also do a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities. I changed threats to challenges, because it seems a little less ominous, but, but still is, is the same thing. And, uh, and then step four is the finish line, where we have a work session with the, I do with the city manager, and we begin the process of drafting action steps for the strategies and objectives that grow out of the vision that, that the council has set. And, uh, then we develop a strategic management barometer, which is kind of a measurement tool that I leave with you, and, and that provides a, a platform for month by month monitoring of the progress on the strategic plan going forward for you. And then we present the plan at the June council meeting, so we can make it in time for the end of the fiscal year. Okay, the next couple of slides, we can, we can zip through fairly quickly, but these simply illustrate the steps of the phase, and these are also included in the proposal book that I gave you. Uh, this is the planning phase, it essentially covers the scope of my proposal to you. Uh, and these steps go in a clockwise motion. Each one of them naturally leads into the next, with one exception, and that is that we, we start with, with mission and core values, and as we go around and stop at objectives, that's where the implementation phase, which is on the next slide, gets inserted. And the last step in that implementation phase then leads back to mission and core values. So, what this actually is, is a continuous strategic management system. It's not just simply a plan. I'm handing you a plan, you look at it, say, gee, it looks great, where's the nearest shelf? We can put it on, and then we move on, and then five years or three years from now, when you do your next plan, you look at it and go, hmm, gee, this was great, but we didn't really accomplish what we said we were going to in here. So, this system ensures that you do that. Um, and except for budgeting, virtually all of the city council involvement occurs in this particular phase. So, next slide, we're almost done, by the way. Then this is the implementation phase, starts with action steps, where I mentioned, I, I sit down with the city manager, and we kind of begin that process of fleshing out the action steps and, um, all of the components of them. Who's, who are the owners gonna be? What are the deadlines? What are the resource requirements? What specifically is the action that, that we need to take? Uh, phase two is pretty much beyond the scope of this proposal, but I will say, I leave you with a tool to help you with the evaluation and corrective action, uh, phase. It's a step-by-step, but it's pretty much for staff to follow rather than the council, but it, it shows you how to, uh, evaluate potential problem areas, and how to take corrective actions to solve them. And then I will also leave you with a, kind of an outline for review and update, which you would do annually, a year from now, uh, each year, and you could do that literally inside a council meeting. It's not a long drawn-out process, it can be done in thirty, forty-five minutes. Um, okay, let's go to the last, project deliverables. Uh, I mentioned the strategic thinking workshop, we kind of kick off with that when I have a client who, who wants it, and there's details in your proposal about that. Uh, weekly progress briefings. The city manager and the mayor receive every Friday a weekly briefing from me that says, "Here's what's been done since last Friday." So, you, if, if you go two or three weeks without seeing me, doesn't necessarily mean nothing's happening. And instead of having to ask city manager, gee, is McCombe doing anything? Uh, you know, because chances are, the reason it's sent to the mayor as well, is that the mayor will in turn, uh, share it with each of you, and so you will see the progress, uh, that, that's being made week by week. Uh, the current state assessment is a complete analysis of both internal and external environment within which the city operates. Uh, the strategic plan is, is kind of obvious, but that includes a, a vision, goals which grow out of the vision, strategies which grow, uh, which support the goals, and, uh, objectives and tactical actions which support the strategy. Uh, the barometer I mentioned earlier, that's the tool, can be in the council packet every time there's a council meeting, or you can look at, uh, in, in one dashboard where, where we're at with the various parts of the process. The evaluation and corrective action template I mentioned, and then one thing that I give to all my clients, is that for six months after the city council, or the Board of Directors, or whatever body it is that approves the strategic plan, for six months after that approval, I make myself available at no charge to answer questions of staff, or frankly, it could be of council members as well. Um, if, if there are questions about how do we implement this, or gee, we, we hit a speed bump here, and we're not quite sure, uh, you know, how to move beyond that. So, I, I provide that help, and that's also not included in this bid, it's at no charge. Okay, and the final slide is just my, my favorite quote on vision. Uh, a woman named Rosabeth Moss Cantor, who's a, uh, an expert on leadership and management, once said that a vision is not just a picture of what could be, but it's an appeal to our better selves, and it's a call to be something more. And, uh, I know it was true when I was running for office. Uh, I was running because I wanted to be something more, and I wanted, well, in my case, my state, because I was in the state legislature in Oregon, I wanted my state to be something more. And I believe that's why all of you chose public service, is that you want something more as well, and the strategic plan will deliver that. Questions that I can answer for the council?
Any questions?
By the way, I leaped right in, and I forgot to thank you for inviting me to this meeting to speak. That occurred to me at the end, but I, I am very grateful for this opportunity.
I guess my questions are more for city man, uh, city staff than maybe you, yourself.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jeff.
Sit, okay.
So, Don, question. Um, I pulled up some minutes and so forth from a year ago, where vision, mission, work plans, all of that stuff was adopted by three of the five of us that are sitting here at council. Are we talking about taking all of that and just doing away with that and starting all over from scratch, or what are we talking about?
No, you, you have a mission and core values, but you don't have a vision plan. And, uh, you have a budget, but, um, you don't have a strategic plan. And that's what the mayor, I think, is, uh, concerned about. And I think the value of... And I think the value of getting involved in this type of process is, I used to tell my graduate students that cities are very dynamic. They're constantly changing. They are not static. They're either getting better or they're getting worse. And you have a lot of infrastructure issues, you know, ahead of you. I think the mayor's showing a lot of foresight to propose this. He's seen it in action in the cemetery district. And I think, Jim, you've got a letter of recommendation from another district regarding what he's done for them. Steve and I have talked about this. The reason that I put it on tonight, when I'm a short timer and I'm out of here, is that he's supportive of it, and you really want to get this rolling if you're going to do it in March, so that you get ahead of the game before you get bogged down in all the budget, and the budget becomes the implementation phase.
I guess the question is, do we need an outside facilitator to help us do this? We've got a new city manager coming in, we've got all these MBAs and degree holders setting up here, you've got a man that's got an extensive finance background, but yet we need to go out and hire a facilitator for fourteen grand?
Yeah, because everybody's got an agenda.
Okay.
Except Jim.
Amen.
Well, could I respond real quick to that, too?
Sure, sure.
The reason you don't want to have one of you facilitate is because you'll be busy facilitating, and you can't be part of the process.
No, no, I agree with that. I've been part of planning sessions, I agree with you a hundred percent. We don't want to be doing that, but I guess, you know, I was questioning past planning sessions and things of that nature, and facilitating, and paying for that facilitation, that's all.
Robbie, in my experience, if you're going to have a real strategic plan, you're going to have a professional facilitator to do it, you know? I've hired Jim in my district to do it. I didn't try to do it there either, you know? When I first used strategic plan was in 2006 in the district, when we had this similar situation we have here, we had hired a brand-new general manager. And how do we tell this general manager what we want him to do? You know, we all have our ideas about what we want to do, but can't we come together and come with a consensus about what we want the guy to do? And that's what our strategic plan did for us. We got together and we worked through the plan, and we came with specific goals and objectives for the new general manager. And that's what I would expect here. We've got a new city manager coming on, how are we going to tell him what we want him to do? Each one of us individually have what we want him to do, but can't we get together and come together with a consensus about what we want him to do?
I hope we can reach a consensus, because it's been hard in the past.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'd like to see us do. I'd like to get together and have more consensus on things. And I think Jim is an expert at facilitating stuff like that to get us to come together. I like that. That's the value I see in it.
Okay. I agree. I see the value in that. I think that other organizations, in my experience, and those of my colleagues, have found that a strategic plan and a vision are absolutely instrumental in success.
Councilwoman Fasenelli, does you have any questions?
The city's going to be fifty-five years old in June.
Who's that?
The city.
Yes.
It's going to be fifty-five years old in June. We have five city council members, we always have. We don't have an elected mayor. By the way, thank you for your proposal. I think it was written very well and very detailed. I don't agree with it, but I appreciate the work. What I see in here is it changes the makeup of what our city has been built on. Because we don't have an elected mayor, we have, the voters' wishes, I think, will be diluted by taking this proposal. And everywhere in here, this vision, the strategic planning, all has to do with going back to the mayor. And that's not what we're built on. And this has nothing to do with, I was mayor, I don't want it to come back to me, I don't want it to come back to Pitts, I don't want it to come back to anyone here. We're looking at a city that has five full-time employees, two of which are maintenance workers. I mean, we run on such a thin shoestring of time, that to look at this and add another twenty-two hours to a city council, add another eighteen hours, nineteen hours for each staff member, we don't need that. Every year, we sit through budget sessions, we sit through strategic sessions, we have forums when we need it. And we're a very financially stable city. One of the reasons that we did hire Mr. Franks, and one of the positive things that kept coming our way, is the wealth of knowledge that he has from the county, and how he will assist this council in being cohesive. We have five highly educated individuals up here, who, some of us have owned our own business, some of us who are retired, who are very successful, and prior councils have been the same way. It's not a necessary part of this small city. If we were a big city, maybe, maybe. But we don't even have any staff to really bring this to. I mean, we just started staff meetings. I mean, even a regular staff meeting was, that's huge in this little city. And it's worked out great. But I don't think that this is something that we need. We've been very successful in the city, but to spend the money to do this, even if it was five thousand dollars, the time involved is not going to benefit the city at all. We have a general plan. We have to review that plan. And I think that that's our future. And we were all elected with a certain vision, and then we all need to sit together and we need to work together. And it's worked very well now for fifty-five years. We may have some fights, but I don't believe that we need someone to come in and tell us what our vision is going to be. We know what the vision is by talking to the residents. And when we need more information, guess what we do? We have a town forum. And we've been able to do that without a facilitator. And if we need a facilitator, we've now hired a wonderful city manager, who's getting paid much more than Jared was, who has thirty years of knowledge coming from the county. And I think I'd like to have the opportunity to have him, you know, try and bring us together at this point. We don't need to tell him our vision. We hired him, he'll figure it out. He'll read it. We don't need to change the vision, we don't need to change the general plan. Every year, we sit down, every two years, we have new people and work it. And I appreciate the time and effort that this has taken, but I don't feel that's right for the city of Villa Park. And it's not something I want to participate in.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way. I was really hoping to get everybody on board on this. It works best when everybody's on board on something like this.
I know.
I think it is something that's very necessary. I think it would greatly benefit the city. But that's just my opinion. I see that the interim city manager and the future city manager are both in agreement that this is something that would be beneficial to the council. These are the people we pay to provide us with advice, and that's the advice that they're giving us. Was there any other comments?
Well, we were all elected by the same city, and we all spoke to residents of Villa Park, but we all, I think all five of us, may have heard different things, or may have interpreted different things, and have a, I'm sure all five of us have slightly different visions of what we want, where we want to be, let's say, in five years or three years. And we'll have different ideas on how we want to get there. I think it's, I've participated in strategic planning before in other organizations, large and small, and I think it's a very beneficial way to build a team. And we are a team working for Villa Park. We're not, we shouldn't be individual agents. We need to, if we want to get to a, share our thoughts, what the vision is, and develop a, you know, articulate a common vision for Villa Park, and develop a cohesive plan for, you know, dealing with the infrastructure needs and the other things that we've got in the city. It's good to put it on paper, make sure that we have a common understanding so we can move ahead. Otherwise, we're just going to be like, you know, a bunch of cats running in different directions. So I support it.
That's the reason I brought it up earlier, because I read all the work that you all had done last year, and it just seems like it's a lot of similar work, because all the words seem to be the same. But now we're talking about starting all over again, with the five of us, I understand that, but how is it different than the process you went through last year?
I know, I view it as a starting point.
Let me ask that. Ronnie, it's totally different what we did last year. We didn't do a strategic planning last year. We haven't done any since I've been here, not strategic planning. We've had some budget sessions. We had Jared facilitate a one-day meeting. We talked about some things, but it had nothing to do with strategic planning.
Because one of the things when I was running for the council...
We do have a mission statement, which is part of the strategic plan. We have core values, which is part of it. But we don't have a vision of where we want to be, you know, what we want to do. We don't have that.
Something similar to that.
No, there's no vision.
Okay.
There's no vision in any of our documents. All we have is a mission, and we have core values. That's part of strategic plan. But that's the only thing we've done towards strategic planning. We don't have any vision of where we want to be, we don't have any strategies about how we're going to get there, we don't have any goals, we don't have any steps, you know, on how we're going to achieve those strategies. We don't have that. That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for not just what our mission is, but then what is our vision? What do we want to do? And what do we want the city manager to do in the next year or two?
Okay.
And I thought this was a way of bringing it, for all of us to come to some kind of agreement of what we want for that, rather than each individual having what their wants are, which could provide us divergent paths, you know? I'd like for us all to be on one path. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, if, at the risk of being somewhat presumptuous possibly, it's obviously you're not all five together on this. I would recommend that you consider continuing this. Let it percolate a little bit. Let Steve inject his ideas and what have you, and continue it for thirty days, and then take another look at this and see if people's reservations and what have you can be overcome. Because without all five, you know, on board, this process is already going to be paralyzed to some extent. So I'd encourage you maybe to just continue the matter and let Steve give his input directly to everyone as well, and answer some of the questions that might be here.
I'm okay with it.
It's a thought.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Give Steve a chance to get on board and see what he thinks. I understand he endorses it now, but maybe he'll have a different feel from a month from now.
Well, it allows it to percolate. And people who have individual ideas, questions, can also meet with Jim and talk more with Jim and get to know him the way you and I have. Because he's a key coach to this whole process, and it might, you know, might bring you together on that. And without all five of you behind it, it's...
It's not going to work.
Yeah, it's not going to work.
Okay. So we'll continue it till next month, then.
Thank you.
How's that?
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a new business, approval of new directional signs in the town center.
Could I interject something? Could we have an update on something earlier?
I thought we might do that during this city manager report.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll pass it to you, no.
Okay. Because they've been here a long time.
We're almost there.
Okay.
Yeah, so approval of new directional signs for town center, staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, when I first came back this time, and it seems like I've always been interested in signs when I have been here. In 2008, why we brought in Bravo signs to begin looking at the entrance, you know, signs. And so when I was here, I noted, and I'd heard that there'd been some robberies in the shopping center, and I began to realize, there's nothing that says anything about the sheriff being here. There's nothing that says anything about City Hall or a library, really, as people are driving around. And so I asked Bravo to, you know, give us a design. You have a copy of it there, and we have money in the budget that can do it. We would put it, the two banks would give us permission to put the signs there, and they would be, quite frankly, happy to have the signs with the sheriff's name in front of their bank, which could have some positive impact on them. Maybe the bad guys just keep driving. So, anyway, that's the recommendation. Very simple, and I've always been kind of a sign guy.
Okay. Does anyone from the public would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the council, have a discussion with the council. Do you have any questions?
I move it.
Move, do you have a second?
Second.
You've been moved and seconded. Could we have roll call vote, Don?
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rossini?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
So if that passes now, we have, next we'll have the city manager's report.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the best part of my report is to just point out the same manager that's coming in, and it's great to have him. I don't know what, if Steve wants to add anything at this point.
Are you going to run?
He's staying put. Let me just go around with the staff. Mike, anything?
No.
Okay. Akram, can you?
I have a couple of updates.
Okay.
The first one is just to update you on the Mesa Henderson storm drain. Staff is continuing to monitor the drainage facility during the rain time, just mainly to make sure that there is no erosion, and the conditions of the remaining corrugated pipe is sound and is, you know, holding. So, and everything so far is okay. We've cut the last rain without any problems around there. And also, the staff is still working with the county emergency staff, and the state, and FEMA, to explore any potential funding options for the permanent solution for the facility. Okay? The second item, I just want to inform you that we received from the consultant, the storm drain master plan, the draft copy of the update. We will be looking through it, to review it, to make sure that he has included all the items that we're looking for, and we'll make sure that we provide a copy for all of you. And that concludes my updates.
Bill, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I sent you all that monthly report, and you saw that?
Yep.
Thank you. It's typical, looks good.
Ray?
Nothing at this time, Don, unless the city council has any questions for me.
Okay, Matt, you and Andrea are watching over different meetings that the council's going to this, I think it's this Friday, the league meeting down. I know the mayor Protim is going, anybody else going to that? And the mayor's going? Okay, that's a big meeting in Garden Grove. Kim, anything?
The only thing I wanted to point out to council and to the public is we started audio recording committee meetings. I'm trying to figure out how to get that uploaded to our website. I'm not sure if our website is compatible with it, but I'm going to be working with our IT people to see if we can get that up there soon, so stay tuned.
And one other thing, we've been having a problem with the screen out here on the front.
It works now. Mike actually used his magic touch.
Way to go, Mike.
Yeah.
Jack of all trades.
Amazing.
Jack of all trades.
Mike is absolutely amazing, because we've had three IT guys out there working on that thing, and it just never keeps working. And so, well done, Mike. Finance director?
We had a meeting with the sheriff's department, and we got our first letter. They gave us three letters before we get the final letter of what the contract's going to be for... going to be for 1718. And it's anticipated of a 5% increase, which is about $80,000. But that's usually, that's usually the high mark, and it goes down. And one of the positive things that we have is, in our budget, we have an overtime budget. And right now, we are running at 30% of that. So we're looking at, I think probably about a $40,000, $45,000 credit back to us in June. So hence, we'll, that'll factor into our April final dollar amount. So I don't think our increase is going to be that significant. So just kind of wanted to give you a heads up on that. We got our OCTA Senior Mobility Program annual audit back. No findings. Everything's good. So we're good there. And then the auditors, the internal control audit, I actually just got a draft this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to look at it. So I'll be bringing that to you once, once I look at it and see what, see what we're looking at. So that's all I have.
Mr. City Attorney, anything?
Yes, I think Akram said what I was going to say about the storm drain, unless people think additional information. But I think that covers where we're at right now. That all needs to be said. One issue of note, just for people who weren't around at the time, the ACC OC was created six, seven years ago, rightfully or wrongly, because people viewed the League of California Cities as being too liberal and not representing entities from Orange County's perspective. And it's really grown into a force, particularly in Orange County, for the, for the sharing of ideas. It was good to see Heather here and then there. I work with them a lot in other cities, and it's often a place where a lot of things get done. I was fascinated once you gave the number about the sober living facilities. That I did not know. That was quite shocking. And then lastly, as I think I mentioned at one point in time, maybe you've read it in the papers, it'll be interesting to see what Attorney General Sessions does with California's now burgeoning medical marijuana and recreational marijuana industry, because he's given hints, and Trump has given hints, that they may be coming down on the states in that regard. So obviously, we adopted a regulation which prohibits them to the extent permitted in law, under law in Villa Park. But we'll see how that all plays out over the next couple of months. Because it still is illegal, as we all know, under federal law. All right? So we have this dichotomy. That is all.
I don't have anything further.
All right. Well, thank you for those reports. Nice time to hear from individual council members, information items, and any requests for items for future agendas. Starting with Councilmember Fasenelli, do you have any reports or comments to share?
I do. I, I have a few, and some of them that the council here has shared also. Just for the public, we were all invited to attend the opening of Villa Park's Little League. And the showing was just fantastic. I'm sorry you weren't able to make it. I know you had other plans. Mayor, he wasn't able to make it. I think they had more floats than our boat parade, which shows you the enthusiasm that our families and younger families in the area have for this city. They were decorated just impeccably. They were out there at 6:00 in the morning, and it really was a wonderful sight to be seen. It was very nice. We were also joined by Mayor Protem Murphy from the city of Orange, and Councilman Alvarez also came and joined us too. So it was a very nice, nice event. I attended the city leaders' reception with AALC. I believe Mayor Nelson attended and Robbie attended also, and that was very nice to see our new elected leaders. And that's something that AALC does put on every year at the Diamond Club. It's nice to meet our new electives. I also attended the Orange Foundation Gala. I know that Robbie did attend also. It was a wonderful event. They honored Todd Spitzer. And it was, it was a very pretty event. If anybody hasn't gone before, the foundation of Orange supports the city of Villa Park. So, and it actually is underneath their name. So it is something that maybe next year, all the council could go, if they have that in their schedule to be able to go. I do go every year. But it is in their statement that they do support our city. So it's a, it's a great organization who puts on the foundation games that comes up in April, that all of our schools participate. In fact, Serrano's been number one on their foundation games, I, I think, almost about 10 years now. Also attended the Best in Bravest on a very windy and rainy day, where City Hall was out of electricity. The phones weren't working, but four of us up here made it down to Costa Mesa. Benji, you were probably working that day. And that was very nice to honor, honor the OCFA employees. We certainly appreciated that. That was wonderful. I got invited to attend the Anaheim Arts Council, which invited myself and actually two other residents from the city of Villa Park, and I didn't know that until I got there, to talk about the Performing Arts Center that they want to build where the Grove is, which is on Cotella Avenue. So there'll be further news coming from me as it goes, but they wanted to get some participation from city leaders and some of the residents that came in. I didn't know what it was about when I got there, but I certainly learned a lot. So I'll be bringing back more about that, having a performing arts that's close here. And I know it's early, but I'm going to mention April 30th, the Villa Park's Women's League has their annual event. It is here in the town center as it normally is. It's called International Taste of Something. It is April 30th. You do not have to be part of the Women's League to come. There's a band, there's food. And I encourage all the council members to come if they're here that day and come with their spouses. It's not a family event. It is an adult event. So those tickets will be sold by the Villa Park Women's League. And if you have any questions, you can always ask me, and I'll lead you to where you can buy your tickets. But they would certainly appreciate the council's support in coming if you're available that day.
Okay. Councilman Pitts?
Well, I think she, she, she told everybody we all attended. Yeah, a couple of things. Go back to the Community Services Foundation. We have some work to do there. I really do encourage any of you and all of you in this room, as well as anyone listening or anyone watching this later on, to, to consider being a part of that organization, because it does benefit our community. They do a lot of great things. And I'm looking forward to competing with Orange and, and coming up with some additional events that are, you know, we have them more often and, and doing things that, you know, are inclusive for our youth and our aging population as well. So really looking forward to that. As far as the Villa Park Little League, been an institution in this city for a long, long time. Encourage everybody to do what they can to support that organization. You know, they have a fundraising event coming up here very shortly, and I'll make sure that we get the date and we post it on, on the city website. Anything that we can do to support their efforts to raise funds, to continue their efforts is, is greatly appreciated. So thank you for that.
Okay. Councilman Rosini?
I just wanted a second. Robbie's mentioned a Villa Park Little League and Councilwoman Fasenelli. It was a fantastic event. I want to give special credit to Matt Hindren and all the other volunteers. Just a phenomenal turnout. Seeing the numbers grow is, is great. And the fields were in immaculate condition. I would have been proud to play on them. I was not quite so fortunate. I had a sewage treatment plant behind my Little League, far different conditions when I was growing up. So they, they did a fantastic job. Seeing the kids out there having a blast was, was phenomenal. It was touching. Parents got involved. It was great to see Orange and Villa Park getting together, both the electeds as well as the communities, and I think that's, that's what it's about. I was also blessed and fortunate in a professional capacity to attend the OC Prayer Breakfast, where Supervisor Spitzer spoke, as well as just some other fantastic people, and saw Councilman Colacott there. Just a wonderful event, and I'm thankful for the opportunity.
Okay. I also got new ores for my car and made my way down to the Orange County Fire Authority's Best in Bravest. It was quite an event, particularly considering the weather and a great turnout. And of course, awards were presented recognizing exceptional actions and performance by the Orange County Fire Authority family. I also attended the mandated ethics and personnel training that was sponsored by the ACC OC over at Anaheim Stadium. Let's see. Participated as a member of the ACC OC Water Committee. And the purpose of the meeting that they had on, the meeting on February 21st was to discuss water conservation in Orange County, recognizing that although we've had a lot of rain, we're going to see more, you know, it's just the history of California, the normal hydrologic cycle. We're going to have droughts and heavy rain seasons over time, but we always need to be prepared for those, for the drought conditions. And you need to make water conservation just a, a matter of our overall infrastructure. I attended the Villa Park Little League opening as well with Councilman Pitts and Fasenelli and Rosini. When I got my notice, I sent a note right back to Matt, the president, and I said, you know, Matt, I, I managed in Villa Park Little League, as did our Mayor Nelson. Actually, he was much more successful at managing than I was. But I went through the whole program with my son, and it was a great program. I agree with Vince. I have, I was astonished at how good those fields looked. For a year, I managed the fields at the, the high school field, and they didn't come anywhere close. They, those Little League fields are pretty special. They did a great job. I did ask Matt during the opening day, how many players? They've got 350 players this year. And also, when I spoke with Matt prior to the meeting, I said, you know, of, of all those players that you have, I know from my own experience, even, you know, 10 years ago when my son was finishing up, there were a lot of players from Orange. And so I encouraged him to invite the Orange City Council. This is more of a community thing. It's not just a Villa Park. It's a whole community event, our Villa Park Little League. And I was pleased that the, the players from Orange were able to see some of their city councilmen there, as well as the Villa Park players seeing their city council member, their members there. So I hope that's something we can continue in, you know, in encouraging the city of Orange to, in both the, the councilmen as well as their businesses, to realize that we're a community here. We need, we need the participation of their, their city council. We also need the support of the business community for our high schools and all the student, or student organizations, the, you know, you know, our track, band, football, everything else, to support our, our students and, and their students that attend the schools in, in our city. Finally, I guess one of the purposes of this session is to, part is to talk about things for the next agenda. And I'd like to request the city manager to review the existing public notification process. You know, what is our procedure? Do we have a written procedure for, to ensure that we don't have problems like we had last month with the Community Development Committee? So that, you know, are, is there a procedure that already says we're supposed to provide notification prior to the meeting? And what kind of, what other public notification modifications might you make to that procedure? Or can you propose a procedure if we don't have one? And also, I've been told by staff that our current procedure only requires notification for a 300-foot radiance, radius from the proposed project requiring a variance. Maybe we should look at expanding that some more, maybe to, you know, maybe expanding the actual physical radius, but also, you know, recognize that other residents that may be outside that residence radius might be impacted. For example, we were talking about, you know, there are other residents that might see this, this fence down along Saravelle that we discussed a variance for tonight. You know, let's, you know, give some more thought to our public notification. We had another notification a, a couple of months back for a proposed four-way stop over on Patrician. And in that one, I asked staff to, you know, although, you know, again, we had a, Jared stated that we just had a 30, 300-foot notification radius. I said, you know, there are a lot of people far to the east of that that may be impacted. So we should notify everybody east of that intersection, you know, and around that intersection, so that they can also be aware and put, give their input. So if you could consider those items and, and come back to us with a procedure that we could review, that'd be helpful, I think. And with that, I conclude. Thank you.
You want that as an agenda item?
For next month, if that's possible.
Do we have someone that agrees with that?
I do. Especially in consideration of our lot sizes.
Okay. Back to me. I like Ron, Ronnie, I mean Robbie, I don't have much to report, but Councilwoman Fasenelli has already given, given my report as well about all the events we've attended. So I would pass on that.
You're not going to tell us about your successes at Villa Park Little League?
Oh. Give me a record. At least give them the record.
Oh, I did manage one year, too. My record was 22 and 2. And the only 2 we lost was the time when I was out of town and my sister. So my record is really 22 and 0. So I never, I never managed again, because I didn't think I could ever top that. So the Villa Park Little League is something very near and dear to my heart. And I certainly hate that I wasn't able to attend the opening meeting for it, because it's really special to me. Okay. We're going to adjourn the meeting tonight in memory of former Villa Park Councilmember Jim Reins. Jim passed away recently. We had his memorial last week, was it not?
This week.
Last week. That is one thing I did attend, as well as with Councilwoman Fasenelli was there as well.
And, and Don Power and Todd and Michelle.
And, and Todd and Michelle, Michelle and her husband as well. So we're well represented there. So with that, is most adjourned to a regular meeting on March 28, 2017 at 6:30 PM?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. We are now adjourned.